And UCSC pays Metro about three and a half million dollars a year for that annual pass that the students receive. And then surveys show that about thirty-nine percent of our customers use the service to get to and from work. So there's just a couple of quick stats. On the funding side, our passenger fares cover about twenty percent of our total operating cost. The existing half-cent sales tax that's dedicated to Metro covers about thirty-nine percent. State funding sources, various sources from the state, eighteen percent. Federal operating assistance, thirteen percent. And reserves, ten percent. And reserves is part of the problem we'll talk about in a minute. So Santa Cruz Metro is a major economic and mobility contributor to the region. Metro's budget supports the economy. Labor, that is wages and benefits, represents approximately eighty-two percent of the operating costs, which makes sense. We're a service business. We provide service, and that's people-intensive. And since eighty-eight percent of our employees reside in Santa Cruz County, the local multiplier effect of those labor dollars to the region is high, as our employees' income are reinvested locally in housing, goods, and services. So in the way of a quick financial overview, the 2017 budget, which is the upcoming year budget, we start July one of this year, will require about six and a half million dollars to balance the budget. And that traditionally has been done through reserves, and reserves are soon to be depleted. In addition to that, we'll continue to use about four-point-two million dollars in what I call capital-eligible funds. That is, funds that are flexible, they can be used for operating or capital, but capital dollars are very valuable to capital-intensive agencies like us, and we would much prefer to have those four-point-two million dollars over in the capital budget. And to give you an idea of what that means, that means revenues that would replace our aging fleet. So as our vehicles need to be replaced, they reach twelve years or five-hundred thousand miles, it's time to replace them. And then along that journey, we have to do midlifes to those, rebuild the engine and do some other improvements to the bus. So what I've just described to you is just simply not sustainable. In addition to the operating structural deficit, Metro's unfunded capital needs are about two-hundred million over the next ten years, or roughly twenty million dollars a year. Just to put that in perspective, we have somewhere around a million to a little under a million a year to put into capital. So that's our current outlook, and that's a long distance from the current need, which is about twenty million dollars a year. And of course, that unfunded capital needs list really puts the extra emphasis on why the capital-eligible money ideally should be over on the capital side of the equation. So the proposed RTC half-cent sales tax measure in November 2016 could provide Metro about two-point-two million dollars a year, which could help Metro deliver paratransit services to Santa Cruz County. In an effort to resolve the structural deficit, we are currently performing a system-wide comprehensive analysis, or what we call a COA. And in March of this year, soon, we will present to the full Metro Board our first round of recommendations and what it would take in order to get to a balanced budget and reduce service as much as six and a half million dollars, which is huge and substantial. So to that end, we certainly want the public to participate. So we want to encourage the Board and the public to look for opportunities to participate by going to our special website, which we call Metro Forward. The website is SC Metro Forward, S-C-Santa Cruz, SC Metro Forward dot com. And that's where you can sort of monitor the process. We have regular updates that we post there. And you can look for public participation opportunities. And another nice feature is you can sign up to receive regular updates. So if we're going to have a meeting, you can receive an update through your email. So in closing, Metro is an important part of the solution to the region's economic vitality, congestion relief, air quality, and overall mobility. And I thank you for the opportunity to present and happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Clifford. Any questions? Go ahead, Mike.
Hi. It seems that -- I always enjoy seeing you. I always enjoy what Metro does, especially Paracruz. And yet, for many years now, when you do come to see us, it's to tell us that a service will be cut, one line or another. And it seems that we're moving towards a path where the only buses available will be the ones that go to the university. That's a concern, and just a comment, because the structural deficit is -- it's the nature of public transit, and I understand that. And we've never really made it a sustainable function.
That's true.
The second thing is that despite me observing other communities, small communities around the nation, using some smaller bus pieces of equipment to service small communities like ours, I've always been told that they're not practical, because the giant buses, though they cost a lot, take up a lot of space, and use a lot of fuel, have a longer life cycle. And yet, other metro districts around the country seem to have seen the wisdom in, you know, a reduced model for moving people in smaller communities. And we have a relatively small community, and the whole county, really, is a small community. Is there any thought to that?
Yeah, these are all the kinds of things that we definitely will be looking at in the coming days. And we do operate a bit of a smaller vehicle. We operate a thirty-five-foot version. You've probably seen those around town. Probably what you're referring to is what we commonly call "cutaways." They're a smaller version of a van, commonly used by paratransit and lift line and those folks. The problem with those is they just do not take the beating of fixed route service, the constant beating of being in service, doors opening, lots of people getting on and off. They do perform well in an environment like paratransit, where you have less sort of on-and-off boardings, and they don't take quite that beating. But there are nearby communities like MST, for example, who are using a lot of those vehicles, and we can certainly watch that carefully and learn from that. We have to do something. And those vehicles that we buy today are getting very costly. Not long ago, I remember buying buses for a quarter million dollars. Today, a diesel is half a million or more, typically six-hundred thousand. We want to invest in electric buses. We're looking for some grants right now. Those get up to eight-hundred thousand apiece, very expensive. Now, on that note, that is exciting. I hope you agree that we would be looking at electric buses. I think that's great for the service.
Electric buses is a lofty goal, and I like that. I don't know if this metro district is in a position to be cutting-edge, as much as we'd love to.
Yes.
But I think that seeing empty buses rolling around makes you wonder. And I understand that you run the routes for the maximum ridership, and yet, in a community, maybe Capitola might even see a couple of bus lines that actually go through Capitola and not just stop at the mall. It would really help our community, but thank you.
And we'll bring those comments to the overall comprehensive operational analysis.
Thank you.
You bet.
So you know that in terms of the proposed tax measure, we voted to not follow the recommendation of the RTC for the split on the percentage for the mobility. So was it seventeen, eighteen, and one percent? So, you know, we do support having that issue revisited. You know, I asked around about you, and I got good reports. People were saying some great stories about how you're really addressing the structural deficit. And so I think that's something this agency definitely needs, or needed. And so my question was, is there an operational issue that was before your time, perhaps, that did not adequately report to the public what was going on in terms of the finances? Is something you identify? Because I understand that you found it to be surprising that it wasn't addressed.
So when I interviewed with the Board just under two years ago, that was one of the things that I pointed out, is that by my reading of their budget, they had a pretty severe structural deficit. They were becoming increasingly dependent on reserves, and reserves are one-time money. They eventually run out. It's just not good policy to run continuously on reserves. So the problem was there, and I told the Board, I said, you know, if I'm lucky enough to be hired, and if you hire me, you're going to have some difficult times ahead, because we're going to go through a number of workshops to help you understand how we got here, what are the contributing factors, how we compare to our peer properties, and then, more importantly, how do we begin to fix this? And the Board did exactly that. They went through months of review, got on board with understanding it, and has taken on the challenges, starting with last year, with some initial increases in fares on Highway Seventeen and some changes in how we do paratransit. And then the big decisions coming this year. How did we get here? Well, I think the Board understood the challenges that they were faced with, going back to post-2008, the economic downturn. And I think the Board, like many people, believed after 2008 that the economic downturn would be short-lived and that we would recover from that. And I think a lot of us in government, you know, hoped that that would be the case. And so they didn't want to be rash, I don't think, to cutting service and doing what some other properties across the nation did. They wanted to hope that things would recover. And as we continued to hope that things would recover, and they didn't, then sort of these non-traditional revenue sources had to come in to balance the budget and sustain the level of service. So I think in many respects, it's to their credit that they tried, for as long as they possibly could, to keep the maximum amount of service, both paratransit and fixed route. But unfortunately, the damage has been done. We'll never get back the sales tax revenues that we lost over those years, and we have to take some major steps to realign our baseline. And that's what we're faced with today.
So part of the rationale which led to the structural deficit, paraphrase what you're saying, is that there was hope that the economic situation in the economy -- no, that's a repeat -- would improve, and so we could withdraw -- we could take money out of our reserves on the hope that it's going to improve. Is that my understanding?
Well, that's my perception. And reserves, what we call capital and operating reserves, are strictly up to Board policy, how they like to use those. Traditionally, they'll be used for the capital side. But when you have shortfalls, hopefully, short-term shortfalls in revenue flow, your reserves are a good opportunity to bridge that gap for a little while before you make some rash decisions.
Yeah, but this extended since 2010. It's a long period to hope and pray that things are going to improve. So I'm glad to hear that you're addressing that and that you have a Board that's on board with that. So the mitigation measures, I was looking at the other report that we got, first of all, paratransit improvements and other things like that. What kind of improvement did that make in terms of the budget itself? What kind of figures were you recovering or stemming losses in expenditure? What kind of figures can you quote?
Sure. On our first round of changes, which were realigning the paratransit to the fixed route and meeting the federal ADA minimum standards, that's somewhere between about three-hundred and four-hundred thousand dollars. So it's not substantial, but we wanted to be very sensitive to making sure that through this entire process, we didn't come across as resolving our structural deficit on the backs of the elderly and the disabled. So realigning the service allowed, for the most part, that service to still be available to the overwhelming majority of our residents who use that service. In some cases, it was a little more inconvenient for them, because where they had opportunity to use paratransit all day, now they had to use it during certain windows of time that were the same windows that the fixed route were aligned to.
Okay. Now, the reason why I ask that question is the deficit is considerably larger than three-hundred and four-hundred thousand, and we're talking about taking services away from the frail and elderly. So three to four-hundred thousand doesn't mean in my book. On the presentation that we got, I didn't understand the term, and that is service distribution measures, broken out into geography and productivity, dealing with the distribution of revenue service hours and source of ridership. If there's a quick explanation, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Well, we can, as we go through this exercise of the comprehensive operational analysis, we can look at trying to keep as much of the geography covered as we have, or we can look at productivity and just strictly on a productivity, very simplistic way. You stack all of your routes in by productivity, and you start from the bottom up, and you start cutting. Unfortunately, when you do that overly simplistic approach, you hurt your overall network. Your buses don't network as well, and you don't end up with geographic distribution, because you particularly hurt your rural areas when you do that. So this whole process is a process involving a delicate balance between making sure that we cover as much of the geography as we currently do and addressing the productivities by making some changes to our lines to make them a little bit more productive. So it's kind of a combination of both, if that makes sense to you.
Okay. My last question is, you do have some financial stabilization plans that you're developing right now. And so based on your presentation right now, they're not fully realized in terms of something you could present to the public. But if there's any material on that that sort of states the existing state of affairs, I'd be very interested in. And I will sign up for this website, but if there's anything you could pass to our Board here, and this is an issue we're very concerned about. As Mike said, we get next to none in terms of service to Capitola. That's another issue. And we've tried to work with the mall to actually improve the turnaround and stuff like that, and there doesn't seem to be much we can do there, unless maybe RTC could help us. I don't know if that's going to be in the mix for the half-cent sales tax, but we do have some money from our RDA program, and, you know, maybe we could work together on something in that regard.
Yes, certainly would. And we'll continue to work with Jamie, as we did last year, in the mall plans. And, you know, I think we had an exciting terminal plan there, and it was sad to see that fall apart, but who knows what's down the road.
Right. Thank you.
Any chance of expanding service for some of our big events? It's kind of a dream, but I know you used to run a bus from Watsonville to the county fairgrounds. I don't know whether it would pencil out, but it'd be really nice for people here to not have to drive all the way to Watsonville for the county fair and deal with parking and all that. Go to the mall, you know, catch a bus, go out there. I don't know whether that would make any money to do that for you or, you know, cover your expenses, but whenever we have these big events here, it would be great if we could run more buses there and educate the public to ride the buses there, to get out of your car and spend the extra time for these special events where there's going to be tons and tons and tons of people, whether it's our Art and Wine Festival or Scotts Valley's Art and Wine Festival, run some buses up there, advertise it, so people can go up there and don't have to drive, they can take the bus up there to the event. So I don't know. I just always think, I was on the transit district for years, and I loved it. And one of my most prized possessions is my bus pass, which I have to renew tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, you know, I mean, that's everybody's frustration right now, is, you know, whatever they're sitting in traffic. So if there's any way we can ever, we can be creative and run some buses to some of these events where there's, everybody's going to be, a lot of thousands of people are going to be going, you know, it'd be worth looking at. You know, I'm sure you have.
I think we should leave that door open for consideration. We should look at each of those case by case. There's, we're precluded, as a federal recipient providing public transportation, we're precluded by law from doing things that compete with the private sector. So for example, I was down here for your wine and art festival, and you had that little shuttle running from the mall down here, which I presume you contracted with. That's an example that if we did something that would then cause you to use our publicly-subsidized service instead of them, we might be in conflict with the law, because we're unfairly competing with them. Now, having said that, there are some opportunities, like you pointed out with the fair, where we can take an existing fixed route that's nearby and run it on an extension, as long as we run it open-door, anybody can get on it any stop, and we charge the normal fare. So that's some of the kind of area that I think we can look at, and I think we should take it case by case.
Well, I was even thinking, charge more, charge like five dollars to ride to the fair. I mean, that's probably, that's more than the bus fare, but gee, it'd be so convenient.
It would.
It would be so easy, you know? Leave your car at home and get on the bus, go to the fair all day, take the bus, you know, home, and pay five dollars, maybe five dollars each way, and so you can make some money, you know, make, pay for the, you know, pay for your costs.
I like the way you think. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Thank you very much, Kelly. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. See you again.
Question from the public? Oh, I guess it's the public here.
It's the presentation, yeah. We'll move to a report on closed session from the city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. There were two liability claims on the closed session this evening. Those were the claims of Kerry Cox and Tuka Gaffari. Those items are on your consent agenda for considering rejection of the claims.
Thank you for that. Sue, do we have any additional materials received?
Yes, thank you. We have four emails we received regarding item nine B, the appeal on surf school permit denial, and we received three emails regarding item nine C, having to do with the conceptual review of the mercantile redevelopment proposal.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes at this time.
Great. With that, we'll move on to the public comment period. This is oral communication. This is time for the public to come and address the city council on any issue that is not scheduled on the agenda. You'll have three minutes to speak on that issue, so if anybody'd like to come up, please sign the roster and tell us your name.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Bush, and I wanted to talk about a, the cell tower that was approved two weeks ago here at the Begonia Plaza location on Forty-First, right above the Safeway, where the New Leaf and Way of Life is located. There's a whole group of us that feel very strongly that that is not in the public's best interest here in Capitola. There are numerous health effects that must be considered when you're deploying this technology. It emits a constant microwave radiation that at levels that are not safe. There is a mountain of evidence that proves this conclusively, that the microwave radiation that is emitted from these towers is well beyond what our bodies are able to tolerate. It has, if you do your research, we've got tons of information to show you that the, this microwave radiation, which is a form of radio frequencies, that comes out of these distributed antenna system, microcell units, and transmitters on the towers, shows that it causes oxidative cellular stress, it damages DNA, it crosses a blood-brain barrier, it increases cancer and tumor risks, it decreases melatonin, it causes insomnia, abnormal heart rhythms, strokes, altered brain waves, cognitive difficulties, memory concentration, consultation problems, headaches, links to all kinds of neurological diseases. I could go on and on and on. These have been proven to be unsafe. The FCC levels also set are extremely high, and when they tell you there's nothing to worry about, believe me, there is a lot to worry about. Cancer rates are skyrocketing here. Nobody that I've talked to wants more cell reception. They're very happy with the reception they're getting. I've never spoken to one person, in fact, we don't even want to go in that area anymore because of this tower that's going to be up. And sadly, it's already been signed, the contract has already been signed with the property owner, with Verizon. And a lot of the information that, watching this process happen over and over again, this rubber stamp kind of approval, where local governments just put up their hands and say, "I'm sorry, we can't consider any kind of health or environmental effects. We're not allowed to, otherwise we'll be sued by these telecom companies." That's a complete, it's bullying our democracy, it's overtaking our rights, our constitutional rights, human rights, health rights. There needs to be huge public health studies that prove this stuff is safe for us. We're not getting that. All we're getting is inside industry spin that pushes this on us over and over again. So I say, we've started the appeal, we're going to fight this to the bitter end, but this should not be happening to us here in Capitola. We deserve better. We know it's wrong, and to just default to, we're not allowed to say anything because of the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which was twenty years ago. This should be looked at, yeah.
Barbara, you need to wrap up, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Thanks to the previous speaker here. Another aspect of this technology is that it's military. And one article I'll give you, it's called "Wire World Is Electropluted." Now, you may have heard from me a number of times, but it's a miniscule amount of time compared to what you hear from the telecom industry and their propaganda arm in touting the benefits of this technology. "Wire World Is Electropluted," an article by Helke Ferry says, and this paraphrased, if something is invented by and for the military, we know it's effective and lethal. And industrial capitalists have a way of repackaging these gizmos, because they don't want to lose potential profit, as beneficial to the public, however, their lethal properties remain. And so out of World War II, radar came the telecommunications industry. And these propaganda firms, in their own words, like Burson Marsdeller, that say, "The role of our communication is to manage perceptions, which motivates behavior, to create business results." And the telecom profits are enormous. There's someone named Barry Trower, who worked in the British Secret Service in the sixties and seventies, and his specialty was microwave radiation weaponry. And he states that these are the same frequencies and power densities used by the military to debilitate people they consider the enemy and to blow up weapons, as is used in Wi-Fi and the wireless technology. So the question is, and he has it stated in his declaration, how can it possibly be safe to have Wi-Fi and wireless technology in schools when the evidence shows the destructive, harmful nature of microwave radiation, which actually dates back to 1932? In addition, so I'm going to leave you some reading materials, because the appeal comes before your council, I'm told, probably in March, and I want you to be well-read up on it, because being informed helps protect our health. Being informed is what you are required to do as elected officials, to act in the best interests of the public and to protect the quality of life here. The quality of life of people in countries where the minerals for this technology are extracted is in great decline. One article here, it's "High-Tech Genocide," and it tells how the coal tan.
Marilyn, you're going to need to wrap up.
Used in the cell phones as a heat-resistant mineral. People are forced to work in the mines, they're slaughtered, and so you get this little device. There's blood on your cellphone, like in the movie Blood Diamond.
Thank you, Marilyn. You can leave those papers for this, and we'll prepare those. Thank you.
This is saying I have thirty-eight seconds left. Did you cut me off?
I did not cut you off. You were over by thirty-eight seconds.
Oh, it's over.
But we like you a lot, so that's why you got to keep talking. Is there anybody else who would like to address this at this time? Seeing that no one else, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. We'll move on to city council comments. I have a few. Go ahead.
First, Mr. City Manager, it's been a long time since this council has heard from or we've heard a report regarding the geological hazard abatement district on Depot Hill. The neighbors up there have reached out to me, and they have concerns, not so much regarding their failed proposal for the seawall, but more with regard to Zone Five not fulfilling their duties with stormwater runoff and causing significant erosion from the top surface of Depot Hill. So perhaps at some future date, you could come back and let us know what the status is. I'd like to know from Public Works what the latest and greatest ribbon-cutting time is for our illustrious skate park on McGregor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. McGregor Park, we had a very good meeting this week with both the soil consultant and the contractor. I hope to have very good news next week, with work potentially beginning as early as the following week on our project.
Great. How much more work would you estimate once they get to work? Will you get a month of completion?
Once we get the remediation work done, we probably have, I'd probably say six weeks would be a better estimate.
Okay. Great. Another question while you're up there. Are there significant amount of underground directional boring taking place in the jewelbox right now? It's being done by a subcontractor, Verizon. There has been reports that they're going to put cell towers on every light pole. I know that that is not a fact, that Verizon's trying to roll out high-speed internet and television service to our community. Can you give us a report on that?
Yes, they, Extent, which was the contractor working Verizon, approached us about getting an encroachment permit. They have telecom license and, you know, ability to install telecom communication facilities. Came to us with a project to install fiber optic cable. It's coming down from Forty-First Avenue down Clares. It's going to be overhead, where we have overhead wires, and in those areas where not, they are doing some limited boring jacking of conduit. Because the parent company for all this was Verizon, we were concerned about the cellular aspect. aspects of it, we know we have regulations regarding cellular antennas. We pressed them, they've told me that there's no, in this project that they are completing now, there is no cellular antennas that will be installed. This is strictly rolling out fiber optic cables, so people can get fast internet service, phone service, and TV service, I believe.
Direct connect wired service.
Thank you.
Great.
And so, that doesn't mean coming down the line, they won't come and seek a permit, made it clear to them that they need to obtain a permit from the city for installation of any cellular equipment.
Great, thank you. And one last question to the city manager. The Friends of the Capitola Library that is in the process of forming, not only to help out our current branch, but hopefully our future branch, in addition to promote the passage of the upcoming parcel tax, they need some direction from you and/or our city attorney regarding exactly what they can and cannot do with respect to promoting fundraising, otherwise informing the public on or off city property.
Thank you, we will be having our library subcommittee meeting coming up, I think, next week, and that can be something that we can try to figure out a way to get onto the agenda.
You know, there are very specific rules, and there are things we can and can't do as far as tabling for the measure when it comes about, promoting the Friends versus promoting the Friends with donations to the parcel tax effort, so we need some definitive direction.
Okay, we can get that to you.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
So, a couple of weeks ago, I went to Children's Network meeting, and I talked about CASA and Foster Ed, and Foster Ed is the one I'd like to bring up, because this organization addresses the educational achievement gap experienced by students in the foster care students, in the foster care system. Participated with United Way in their youth finance prevention effort, and came across a lot of foster youth that were actually homeless, and participated in this program to try to give us an idea of the issues and conditions they face every day. And one of them actually is, as Foster Ed is trying to address, lack of educational achievement when you're actually in a foster home, and so having difficulties there and then going on to higher education is a problem. Also, there's a bill called AB 908 that's gone through the Senate and Assembly, it's on the governor's desk, it provides two extra weeks for paid family leave. So, I remember when my daughter was born, and I had to negotiate to get any time off just to be with her, so there wasn't a right to do that. The Hazardous Materials Advisory Commission is actually looking for another community member, and they plan to address issues to make their commission a little bit better known in the community.
An at-large seat?
Yeah, there's no specific, like, a city or anything like that. I don't know if anyone's familiar with Interlight, but there was a caregiver university there a couple of days ago, excuse me, a couple of weekends ago, which I went to, and I learned a lot about Alzheimer's, and it just shook me to the core, it really did. I went to this because, well, you always wonder yourself, you know, I'd forget my keys, you know, that kind of thing, but this is a little bit more serious than that, because I'm working on creating with community members, a village effort in Capitola and Santa Cruz, so that's why I went there, I felt I should know about some of these issues, so I was really glad I did. Also, I'm a member of the Commission on the Environment here in Capitola, and I want to relate two things we did. There's a Regional Adaptation Collaborative that's starting, which will deal with adapting to some of the issues that climate chains are going to present this area. So I went there with Peter Wilk, who's also on the commission, and I came back being chosen as part of the organizing committee, so maybe I shouldn't have gone. But I learned a lot about, you know, the need for addressing climate change, and we're obviously fairly close to water, sea level, so we're going to have some issues. Also went to the Monterey Bay Community Power CCA, which I was glad to see Rich there, he's our representative on that committee. And the reason why I went is because the first draft of the technical study, which is going to lead hopefully to the formation of a CCA in this area, was presented, so that was quite interesting. Also getting back to the COE, Peter Wilk, like I said, is a member on that, he put together an effort to do ivy pool up near Perry Park. So if you go up to your Perry Park right now, you'll see a whole swath of land that's actually cleared of ivy, and I thank Danielle Harret, you Harret, for putting together a great refreshment, there was a lot of kids there, and I think everyone enjoyed their time. Thanks.
I was lazy, and I didn't come down for the Soquel Creek Water District Board meeting last week, but I stayed home and watched it on television. I'm really glad they do that, I hope people will watch it, even just for a little while, you get a chance to see what they're planning and what they're doing, and they meet again next week on the 16th. So they did show a map, I forgot to bring it tonight for the council members, but I'll bring it next time, of their potential sites for a treatment location, to treat the sewage water, and to be able to use it for irrigation and landscaping and things like that. So they have a number of sites, and they explain the pros and cons of each site. There were only three members there, because Michelle was on a trip, so she couldn't be there, and there's only, and then there was another member that wasn't there. So, anyway, interesting, fascinating stuff, nothing's going to be happening for a number of years, but we need to follow it every step of the way, and I'll be happy to, and bring you information, or try to learn as much as I can about it, because it is such an important topic, so. Anyway, I'd like to put two items on the next agenda, possibly, if I get them together, one would be a letter on the consent calendar, expressing our dismay at the dismissal of Charles Lester as a member of the Coastal Commission, and there may be some difference of opinion about that here, I hope not. I've been interviewed twice for the California Coastal Commission, it's an honor to have been chosen. You're chosen because of your knowledge and your experience, or your connections or your money. And I was not chosen, the two times, and they just dismissed their executive director. You know, you got political differences, you don't fire Jamie, you know, you deal with it.
Is that an option?
And so, so I'm really insulted, you know, that they did this, you know, I mean, they were after their previous executive director, Peter Douglas, for years, and I knew him, I mean, he had my home phone number, and he called me when he heard I had been, my name had been submitted. And he said, sort of, you know, "Can you stand up to the developers?" And I said, "Ask anybody in Capitola." I mean, anyway, it just breaks my heart that they fired, you know, their executive director. So I'll put that on the consent calendar, and you can, we'll do what we want with that. And I want to put a small item on to begin the review process of the city's Americans with Disability 88 transition plan. That's all.
Okay, great, thank you, both of those are very valuable. I'm going to go ahead and use my time to make a little presentation here, so, I'm going to ask our city treasurer to come up and join us. I was going to do this a treasurer's comment, but I figure this is more appropriate. So I think everybody should know in the city of Capitola that our treasurer's been gone from us, missing for, since November, because she had a little baby. And I'm not going to steal your thunder, I'm going to let you describe, tell us about, tell us about who, who is in your life now.
So, our future mayor. Kingston James McBroom was born on October 30th, about six weeks early, and he's doing great.
And we're just all elated to have you back, we've just got a little gift for, not for you, for Kingston. I just want to share one quick story, just, I know Stephanie will love this, I did a little research, because I thought possibly that Christine might be the first elected official in Capitola to have a baby as an elected official. And I probably should have called you, you might have known the answer to this, but I went to our resident historian, which is Carolyn Swift, and she advised me that back in the day, the position of city clerk was an elected position. And although we had a secretary here for the city manager, for when she had her first baby, she went on maternity leave, when she came back, she was elected to the position of city clerk, and that was Pam Greniter, so she was the first woman to have a baby while in office, but we're just glad to have you back, so, thank you for that.
And I do think, Christine, you have to open it there while you're up on the stage.
Oh yeah, let's do that. We're not going to, we would never embarrass you.
Just don't put it on.
Well, not intentionally.
Does it say future mayor?
Good.
Close.
How cute.
You're welcome, thank you, and welcome back.
We're trying to get them to think about being the future mayor.
And when you sit down, it'll be time for treasurer's comments.
My comment?
Yes, absolutely.
So, the Finance Advisory Committee meets Tuesday, February 16th, and anyone from the public is welcome to join us. We'll be talking about and doing the report on the annual financials, and then we'll review the mid-year estimates and talk about some of the budget items, so if you'd like to join us, it's a party, come on and join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have a new member then, I think. Isn't that true? Are we going to have a new member at that point?
On the Finance Committee.
No, on the, yeah.
Senator from the-
Nat Arthur.
Oh, the business representative from the, correct.
That's right, we have a new member.
Mark, you have to be prepared to swear the guy in.
I wanted to mention, there's some openings on committees, we have an opening for a board member on the Historical Museum Board, and also still looking for a student on the Commission on Environment, and we're recruiting for an alternate representative on the Advisory Council of the Area on Aging.
Great, thank you. Staff comments.
A couple of quick items for you, the first is, is I received a resolution of appreciation from the Soquel Creek Water District to the city. The Soquel Creek Water District, as Stephanie pointed out, has been using our meeting rooms for meetings for the last several years, we've made it available for them, because they wanted to get their meetings onto TV. So they've been very appreciative of the meeting room space that we've offered them, they seem to have outgrown their own space, and I really appreciate the facilities here. So they wanted me to express their appreciation for the city for offering up our space to make a use. In addition, they dropped off some donuts, which unfortunately have all the need.
Lucky for us.
In addition, I just wanted to let you know that we will be opening the bids, I believe it's scheduled for next week for 38th Avenue, keep your fingers crossed, hope they come in good. I signed the contracts earlier this week, maybe it was last week, for Stockton Avenue project, they, you'll recall that some of the equipment that was going to go in for the Stockton project, had some lead times, that stuff's been ordered, I understand it was ordered the same the day after the council took action, so we should be seeing construction there starting relatively soon.
Great.
And I think that's all, unless there was a question from council member Bertrand.
We don't charge the Water District for the use of these chambers, correct?
We haven't in the past, I discussed that with their general manager this morning, and I think we're going to try to come up with some, because it's become sort of a constant, relatively ongoing thing, that there's probably some reasonable level of-
Nominal user fee.
Nominal user fee, I mean, just to cover the cleaning costs and sort of the wear and tend of overall facility, but we have made it available for free in the past, they actually suggested that we should probably try to identify appropriate fee, and we're going to do that.
Okay, well, your guidance, I have no problem charging, not charging another government body for use of a government facility, quite frankly.
We tried this before, maybe we should reach out one more time to the Soquel School District, and offer them the chambers, in an effort to promote attendance at their meetings and to televise their proceedings. It could happen.
That's a good idea.
We've tried in the past, they declined, but we might want to reach out again.
Maybe that's a good thing for them.
I think we can bring that up, but great idea, it'd probably be, especially the televised version, that would be perfect.
Now, the televised version, there would be a charge for that though, right? I mean, not from us, but from the-
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So they'd have to bear that charge, it's not us.
Okay, good. We'll move on to the consent calendar, these are items that we normally take together as one group item, is there anybody, and vote collectively on them, is there any items that would like to be pulled? Anybody from the public that would like to pull an item on the consent calendar? I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. With that, we'll move on to general government, and first on our agenda is a presentation of the Capitola Branch Library conceptual renderings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce this briefly, and then I'll turn it over to Pamela Anderson-Bruet, who is our city architect. Pamela's been working for the city on a number of projects over the last several years, she's the city's on-call architect. You'll recall that several months ago, we authorized a relatively small contract to host-
Do you need to go again?
To host a public meeting regarding library design, and develop some graphics to-
Yeah, we could put it up there, yeah. I'm going to get a screen.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, that was a little distracting. We had a $25,000 contract to develop some graphics that would be helpful to display and show the public a little bit about what the new Capitola Library might look and feel like. So with that, I'll turn it over to Pamela Anderson-Bruet, who is also a Capitola resident, I might add, and has done a great job helping us in this process.
Welcome, Sabrina.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. One of the reasons I'm a Capitola resident is that my mother is here, and I purchased her home when she moved very close by, so I welcome her as well. I have a presentation, is it up, or do I need to-
It is, try touching the screen, see what happens.
I can mark my address.
What music? I don't know if it shows, it's been four hours.
Great.
Could be possible, let's do it. Could fall out.
Okay. I thought it would be good to not only sort of do the moment, a ta-da moment, where you see the actual renderings that we've been working on, but really talk about how did we get here, what is the process we used, how did we work with the community to really create some of the conceptual ideas that we've done this evening. So the context really of the presentation is that we've been working, as was stated, since October. There were workshops that really looked at talking to the community about desired character, looking at the experience that folks felt was important in the library itself. Also, some key learning from the workshop came out in that dialogue, and that really helped us sort of inspire us in the inspirational graphics that we're going to show you tonight. Really important to know that this isn't deep architectural work, this really is at a conceptual, conceptual level, it really is the, sort of as words came through the workshop, inspiring us to do the graphics that communicate some of the potential. So I don't want anybody to think that anything is done or decided, there's so much left to decide, but it was really important to try to articulate through both images and actual rendering, some of the thoughts that came out through the workshop. So I want to take you through a summary of the workshop findings, a little bit of how that translated into key learnings for us about design character, and then really look at character drawings of what the future library might look like, once you have decided what you need to decide to move forward. So as an example, I wanted to show you that there's some steps that we take whenever we help a community begin to look at character. And the first step really is to have a community workshop and gather the thinking, really think about how that would come. We often bring imagery with us, and let people really talk and look at, and sort of put dots on things that they really appeals to them, and really talk through why it appeals to them, both from a perspective of Capitola as a whole, and then the library specifically. And then we begin to do sketches, really quick sketches, none of these are yours, these are examples from other communities, and through those sketches, we begin to do rendering. So we explain this to the community at the very beginning of the workshop, that this is the pathway that we were going to be on, and why. So these are just some sketches. So just a summary of the workshop, we worked on character, we decided that we should talk about the character of Capitola holistically, and then really the library sites specifically, and what libraries meant to the community. We broke that down into form, materials, and scale and massing of the library, of a future library, and I'm going to show you kind of how that worked through the workshop. So the question that was asked of the community is, what comes to mind when you think about the character of Capitola? We did some photography around Capitola, and got some historic shots, just to stimulate that conversation, but the words that we heard and collected were really the important part. And then- quaint and small city, seaside city that it U are. We think about stucco buildings, we think about outdoor living, we think about active people and connections that they have. We think about the natural beauty of the site, the fact that everybody is very community-minded. We have unique neighborhoods, neighborhoods with personalities and names. And we also look at sort of that it's a busy tourist-focused environment. Human scale is really important as a character of Capitala, and things that aren't out of scale with people and the community itself is important. And then sort of this eclectic architecture, there's really quite a few different styles and feels as you move from, say, seaside and up into more of the wooded areas and hillsides. So, the next question that we asked was around the character of the library site itself, and it was slightly different, it's unique. It's further away from the coast, it's a little less of the tourist area. So, words that really stood out are sort of this idea of an oasis, a quiet refuge. The oak trees are important and the natural woods. It feels shady and rustic. It's really close to the creek side and sort of feels like a part of that. The natural flow from Soquel to Capitala, the way it was described to us is it's the back door to Capitala, and it's kind of the way that folks come in that live here probably or know that back door. We looked at this whole concept of how do we take cues from Risbon Mansion, how do we think about architecture character from that standpoint? How do we, how do we treat the totlot and how we respect that that's there and the oaks that are there? We also looked at the idea of this as a potential different kind of gateway into Capitala. It is that back door gateway, and then the multi-level terrain and open space that exists. And lastly, it was really brought out in kind of wonderful comments that it's a butterfly habitat, it's a riparian corridor. There's really many unique aspects to that site that need to be respected and considered in the design. We went through then exercises, the first one being around defining form. We used, this is just a few of the images we looked at, we actually had a lot of images that allowed people to think about defining form. We looked at things that had arches and curves, gables, angular forms and such. So, there was a lot of different types of forms that we considered, and these are just a few of those. We also had discussions around materiality, what types of materials made sense for this particular site, the library of the future for you. And again, lots of different comments were made. The image in the middle, that was one that people thought about, the idea of just sitting in a window seat and being able to read a book, and so these kind of discussions were had amongst the community members. We also talked about scale and mass, you know, what size, how are things broken down, single mass, multiple masses, shorter scale and such. So, these were things that we also discussed with the community. So, these are your actual boards, and we just show you these, not that you can see those images, but that each of the groups began to score and sort of collect ideas, and certain things really stood out to folks amongst that. Each team began to then articulate ideas that were important to them, and again, just to have this in your record, so that you know what each team talked through. What really kind of stood out were two key emerging thoughts came out of this. One was this idea of playing off the concept of the Risbon Mansion and the architecture of the Risbon Mansion, using arches, windows. People really looked at that, talked about courtyard use and such. And the other was this idea of building off of a recalling the natural elements, the riparian corridor, the oaks, and the kind of park-like nature, the totlot. So, those were kind of two key dialogues that came out of that community forum that we talked a great deal about. I think the insights that came to us is that it was really important to connect to the site and the history of that site, and draw from the natural elements of the site. We were interested in connecting to the Risbon Mansion in some way, and possibly through the use of stucco and stone was part of that. The open plan with broken-up masses was something, as everybody looked at these images, it became clear that they didn't want to just have one big mass, but something that seemed to break things up and make it more smaller in scale and make it more human in scale. There's a lot of discussion about using more than one type of material, using multi-materials, indoor and outdoor connections, really idea of reading outcoast, I kind of talked about that in that one image. Natural light, careful use of light was really important to folks, and then light within the library to be careful, carefully managed, you don't want to just spill light out into the neighborhood, there's a lot of homes just directly adjacent. And then lastly, this idea of breaking down scale and masses and really looking at something that was visually strong. People felt that it is a library, which is a public place, and it should have a public presence, and no, it shouldn't look like something else, it should look like a library. So, that was also very important to the dialogue we had with the community. So, some summary of learning is that simple forms broken down seemed to be really key. Folks wanted it to be timeless and contextual. We wanted to articulate library use and have this sort of invitation that invites people in. We also wanted to be responsive to the site's contextual environment, and really think about the riparian corridor, the butterfly habitat and such, really think about materials. You seem to be breaking your equipment. And then, and again, into the scale and massing, really looking at how we can, how can we can make this building very much a public facility and have its kind of civic pride, but at the same time, break down that massing. So, we take all that learning that we had from the community workshop and forum, and then we begin to translate that learning into architectural character and form. So, early on, prior to even starting this process, we did a site study and exploration to look at how can you fit the program that was developed through the needs assessment onto the site, how do you begin to fit parking? We know that there's discussion still afoot amongst all of you, amongst the size of, what size should the library be? The needs assessment, I think, had it around 13,000 square feet, and as you can see from this, from this image, you know, maintaining that, the totlot in the park, getting parking on-site, dealing with the various slopes that you have, it's challenging. And then this conceptual idea is, what would it look like to have approximately 13,000 square feet? Your site is very unique, and we began to look at form and really work on those forms. We were looking at the idea of whether you came on bike, bus, you walked, or you parked by car, that you should have an equal experience in entry. So, if you see the two arrows coming in, the idea is that you could come in either by, you're at the totlot, you're playing, you want to come into the library, or you park your car, you want to come in, that you could come in from either side. And it really looks at the idea of having a building that has very expressive sides of sort of adult, active library areas, children's library areas on either side. And again, these are just conceptual ideas, looking at where staff might be, where book drop might be, prior to doing any architecture or any floor plans. We began then to look at these concepts, and I think one of the things that came out really strongly in the dialogue that we had with the community is, as much as we like this idea of the Risbon Mansion and sort of the Mediterranean style that comes with that, people began to talk about the fact that that is its own thing, and it comes from a certain period, it has certain architecture, it's three stories in nature in the back, the arched windows and punched window openings, as we say, are relatively small, if you look at the size of the walls. And we started to, that conversation started to steer to the idea of, well, what if we use more of the riparian corridor, the natural wooded environment, multi-materials, break the scale down? And we met with the library committee and talked more about that, and really felt that that was probably, at least for this study, the right direction to go in. So, what you see is these sketches that begin to play with reform, thinking about solar access, thinking about articulating the adult and children's areas, thinking about using natural stones, natural woods, some stucco, and looking at conceptually a library that would allow its scale and mass to be broken down. In these studies, we look at the possibility of lots of glass and even potential views towards the riparian corridor, towards the hills. And so, all of those things were sort of, we began to sketch and think and try to take all those words and make them into imagery. We then take this into the computer world, and we have built a 3D modeling of it, just to, again, to study shade, shadow, light, kind of look and feel. We wanted to explore the idea of entry and study the entry from both Claire's side as well as the parking lot side, really understanding that Wharf Road really is that front door and that first impression that we wanted to give. So, the image that you see there is if you were across the street and looking at the library from across the street. So, then we got, took all of this and began the kind of artistic side of thinking through, what might this feel like, what might it look like as a site? None of this is designed. All of this is just, even though we're using a computer and it looks very done, it is not, no decisions have been made. So, this is just us looking at all of these possibilities for the site. In this particular case, how might the buildings change that massing, break the volumes down? How might you park and come into the building or play at the totlot? How do you connect on your sideways and walkways to keep people safe and be able to enter the library in a very accessible way? So, this is just conceptually looking at a possible site plan. And then taking that idea and taking it into a watercolor rendering and looking at possibilities of using various materials, various massing, and really creating something that's uniquely yours and belongs to the site and the context of the site, but is respectful of the neighbors. Almost all of the glazing and light is actually towards the Risbon Mansion and a little bit as towards Claire's, but very quiet and one-story adjacent to the neighbors. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and again, just remind you that it's all very conceptual.
Thank you for that. Questions? How large is the footprint you showed on the site plan?
I think it's about 13,000.
And it looks as though there's a lot of second-story space in this.
There is actually only one area of second-story space, and that is conceptually looking at the possibility of a community room up on a second floor. If you notice, there's kind of a balcony edge, that would be a roof, potentially a roof balcony, that you could have the community room open during the hours of the library or after hours. We've thought about how you might access that, still securing the library. And so, it is just the thought about having this incredible view from up there, being able to see the creek side and the hills beyond, being able to use that as a community space both during library hours and after. So, that's the only two-story space. Everything else is one story, but we lifted up the ceilings to have different volumes and high north light and things like that.
And how many square feet does that add to the 13,000 by having that additional space?
It doesn't, because what we did is, we actually were able to carve and push and pull the square, the volumes. By lifting that up onto the second floor, it gave us a little bit more site room. It's very, very tight.
So, the site footprint isn't a full 13,000?
What we did is, if you look at the, yeah, if you go back to the floor plan at here, what we're doing is about the same square footage as the original feasibility study, but we're pulling some of that square footage up, and that's giving us enough room to frankly have a little bit more room, a little more landscaping than we would have had if it was all one story.
So, the footprint's slightly less, so we can have more landscaping, but gross square footage, including the second floor, is 13,000?
Is about the same, yes.
Good. Will these drawings in a large format be available for our birthday party?
That was one of the ideas.
Good. We'd like to have more than just an 11 by 17, we'd like to have some--
I think it's about like this and this.
This and this, architecturally, exactly that amount? Good, perfect.
Are they available electronically also, other than the pack, just the packet? Will we have, right here in the packet? Or we don't have, maybe we don't have this in?
Councilmember Harland, in fact, I have a press release that's all queued up here, ready to go out with the digital format. We will be putting it on the website, we will be sharing it with the Friends group, we'll be putting the posters up, I'm sure we'll leave them up for display in the library. So, we're gonna be doing everything we can to get this out, because obviously, it's why we did it, to help share with people a little bit of the vision for what the new Capitala Library could look like.
Comments? Mike, do you have more? No? Good.
Yeah. I like the idea of an upstairs, second-floor community room, too. Can you tell us a little bit about the different areas in the library, or is this just the outside envelope at this time?
Well, I spent, I spent a lot of years designing libraries, so I couldn't help but think about what might happen on the inside, and so did our team. So, you know, in general sense, and I don't know if I have a pointer, I could point, but in general, big-picture sense, the idea might be that the first thing you want to come to is actually a staff area, so you can drop your book from the outside directly into a staff area and really make that easy for the user and staff, and that usually wants to happen both on the inside and out. We thought about the idea of a children's area being the large, the larger space, light-filled by northern light, and we thought about that central core being really a very kind of small area so that you can observe people coming in and out of the library from two sides. A little bit, libraries like to have one door in, one door out for security reasons. We've done actually a lot of libraries that have this double-sidedness, because a park might be on one side and the parking might be on another, and one of the ways to control the security of that is actually make that a pretty closed space, which you see from the either side of that trellis concept. And then we have restrooms and support spaces, and then areas for open adult reading, and then some quiet room. There's a lot of talk at the community forum, and you see the kind of pointed room that's there at the tip, about having this sort of reading room idea and being able to sit in window seats and kind of feel that you're cozy and reading and so forth. So, we did play with the roof planes to try to have some feel cozy and more at a, you know, eight, nine-foot height, and then others that vaulted up and felt really quite large. So, that's, other than that, that is all like one big open space that we can really articulate through, the way we furnish and how we do book collections and how you lay it out. But, those are just very big-picture thoughts. This has not been designed, but we wanted to think about these kind of ideas. There are no floor plans to go with these ideas, they're really sort of bubble sketches of how things might lay out.
One more. So, I'm trying to get a general idea of some of, because I had a comp, like I couldn't come, but it seems like the people that participate really feel a special connection to the fact that the Soquel Creek's there, the Risbon's there, and it's a wooded experience. And is that the way you would describe to someone? I mean, is that connection to the woodiness?
Yeah, it's actually, like I said, there was really this, a lot of dialogue around the two con, either the concept of being like the Risbon Mansion, or being really more site-contextual, and I think in the end, even those that really love the Risbon Mansion and the architecture of it, kind of, there may be still some that would like this to look more like that, but a lot of sort of said, yeah, leaving it special and leaving it unique is a good idea. So, we really are, the thought is literally, we're pulling this creek up and over, we're imagining one day the park will be across the street, we're playing off the oak groves and leaving the oaks that are on the front and in the park to be their natural beauty. So, bringing the stone in, bringing the wood in, and then, and all of that is really where the concept came from. We heard that this used to be an old logging road, that was a bit of history that we learned. So, I think that that really became the primer for the, for the concept, is to use those natural materials, and really also consider the neighborhood. Everything near the neighbors is one story, it's very low and light, and all of the high windows that you're seeing, for the most part, with the exception of that front bough, if you will, those are north-facing. So, we're really trying to be careful with the way we are considering how this fits into the environment.
Pamela, exciting. I think just, I love your enthusiasm, I love the direction you're going, I think we're all just waiting for things to develop, but what a great presentation. I think I'd just like to open up to the public, see if anybody has any questions at this point. Is there anybody from the public that would like to come and ask a question about the library, or proposed library? Seeing none, okay. That's the end of your presentation. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. No action required there, just a presentation. So, we'll move on to the next item, which is the appeal, SURF school permit denial. Chief Escalante.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Rudy Escalante here, Chief of Police. What we have in front of you tonight is a report on a denial of a SURF permit application for the 2016 season, and you have a couple of options. No action required there, just a presentation. So we'll move on to the next item, which is the appeal, surf school permit denial. Chief Escalante?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Rudy Escalante here, Chief of Police. What we have in front of you tonight is a report on a denial of a surf permit application for the 2016 season. And you have a couple of options presented to you. One of them is to deny the appeal or up, number two would be the uphold the appeal and direct staff to prepare an ordinance amending Municipal Code Section 9.30020 to permit five surf schools to be introduced at today's meeting. So just to give you a little background, since in 2008, the city council adopted an ordinance to operate and regulate surf schools at specific beaches and surf breaks within the city. Since that time, over the last three or four years, we've seen a significant increase in inquiries where people have been asking about surf schools. In 2014, we had a new business come into town who was interested in operating a surf school down in the break. All the permits had been issued at that point. We had to issue a citation at that time to deal with the excess school that we had. So when we received the applications in 2015 in January, the first application that came in was from Capitol Surf and Paddle. And the ordinance and the administrative policy didn't address denying permits and what we ended up doing was we received the first four permits that came in in 2015. And at the time, that was all that staff was allowed to issue was four permits. When that happened, one vendor who had been involved in the surf permit schools since its inception, his application was not turned in and therefore was denied a permit because we only could issue four. There was an appeal and in 2015, the council approved an uncodified ordinance to allow five schools to operate in 2015. We also improved and modified our administrative policy so that we had a way of doing a competitive assessment when we received more applications. And so through the year, we worked with five schools. Staff was concerned about the number of students in the water. We agreed with the, all the permit holders at that time that eight students was the maximum amount of people that should be in the water at the time. And staff still is concerned about that and we would request that we still maintain that level of students to instructor ratio. So we ended up with five applications. As we ended the year, we came back to council because the uncodified ordinance was set to expire, which would have reverted us back to four permits. So during the application process, we received five applications. We then developed seven assessment questions. We reached out to people who are familiar with surf schools, who have a familiar surrounding with Capitola, and we asked them to do a competitive assessment on the supplemental questions along with the, but not the applications. We reviewed the supplemental responses to make sure there was no indication as to who the response came from, and we gave them the three separate independent reviewers. There were thirty-one points assessed to all seven questions total, some of them five points, some of them three points. It was a challenge to try and develop fair questions and so we handed those out. And when we got the responses back, we totaled up the scores and we took the top four. From that assessment, one of the permitted applicants from 2015 was denied a permit because they received the lowest score. That permit holder happened to be a local business, Capitola Surf and Paddle, who also had a surf permit through the year of 2015. So we are, when we issued the denial letter, the applicant came forward and asked to appeal the process. Per the municipal code, the applicant filed a appeal letter and I've attached the appeal letter along with the applicant's application. And we are now at a hearing to where the applicant is present and I believe members of the public are here also to answer questions and provide a statement to you as well. And so with that, that concludes my report. Again, your options are, or at least the ones that we presented tonight, is to deny the appeal or uphold the appeal and direct staff to prepare an ordinance amending the code, Section 9.30020, which is an attachment as well. And we would also, if the appeal is upheld, we'd have to amend our administrative policy, specifically Section 3, subsection B, to permit five surf schools. And with that, that concludes my report. I'm available for questions?
Any questions, Mr. Chief?
Oh, wait, no, I do have a question. Chief, the year that we had five surf schools but a maximum of eight students, how did that work?
We did not issue any citations. We did receive concern or at least a complaint regarding more students being in the water. We did talk to Capitola Paddle, Surf and Paddle about that and also about a licensing of a particular instructor. When we represented those issues to him, they were fixed in a timely manner.
Question?
If you were to look at the records going back two years, which covers a four-year, excuse me, four permitted operators and five permitted operators, okay, could you see any difference in your yearly interactions with the surf schools and people in the break and your general experience?
Staff's interactions with the permitted schools, I feel, has always been good. We've had a good relationship with them. I think that's important to continue. I did not, I only received complaints from one permitted school. And we were able to handle that. None of the permitted schools in 2015 received any citations for any violations. We handle all kinds of permits that we issue throughout the city for various types of events, even long-term special events that we have. Every once in a while, there are violations that do occur and we usually handle them by having a conversation with them. It seems as though that has been the same for the surf school permit schools. If there are violations, we try to address it one-on-one and it's always seemed as though it's been resolved.
I appreciate the one-on-one treatment. I think the community would really appreciate that also as well. I'm focused on your staff time and it doesn't seem like what you're telling me, you see much difference or any at all between four or five permitted operators. Is that correct?
That's correct. I would like to still emphasize that I think eight students maximum needs to stay in that place there.
Yes.
I think that is important for safety reasons.
Yes.
But it was not an issue for us. In the summertime, we obviously are extremely busy. We will utilize our non-sworn staff if we have to go down to inspect for potential violations.
Okay. Thank you.
That was a question. Thank you, Chief. I have no questions for you. I think at this point, I'd like to bring up the applicant first before I open up to the public. He'd like to make a presentation on his appeal.
My name is Jason Allen. I am the owner of Capitola Surf and Paddle. Thank you for hearing us, Mayor and council. We've, we're starting our fourth year. We're happy to say that we're starting our fourth year this year here locally. The shop is down over on San Jose Avenue, so we're right here in the heart of the village. When I first received notification that I didn't receive or was excluded from being allowed to create or conduct surf lessons, went through kind of a bit of emotions there. Kind of the one that stuck was a bit of, a little bit of dissatisfaction, a feeling of being excluded in a way. I'm a resident here in Capitola. I have a shop here in Capitola. I've tried to, what in my mind, when I started this thing, was to have a job that was a passion for me, to share that experience, to be very business-friendly and most importantly, to have great customer service, okay? So when this was denied to me, I just definitely felt like I was kind of left behind here and just kind of blindsided. When I, at least the excuse, or not excuse, but the reasoning that was given to me that I was not given permission to have a surf school was that of having less surf school experience than the other permitted surf schools. To my knowledge, that really hasn't been a measuring stick as far as, and it kind of puts us in kind of, you know, catch-22, if you will. How do I get experience if I'm not allowed to give, you know, or how do I have experience if I'm not allowed to give experience? Okay. And I understand the concept there, but again, it's about customer service. It's making that customer feel warm, welcome when they come in through my door, that they feel a part of this community. And when they do, when I do that for them, it makes them feel good and comfortable and happy and hopefully return again because that's the ultimate goal of not only a business, but just having a community, this community, is to have people return to us. Part of customer service is being a full service, offering the things that the sign says, you know, lessons, rentals. So when people come in and I say I can't do that, I don't have really a complete business. Last year was very good in the sense of we were able to handle a lot of requests, the surf lessons, the paddleboard lessons, the rentals and such. So it made a big impact for us. Not having the ability to do that really kind of takes away from my business, doesn't make me look very good. And I think that in turn, because the city's not allowing me to do that or to have the lessons, that it kind of makes the city look a little bit bad, too, because they're not allowing their own business to have. Yes, I'm sorry, yes, there is a little bit of financial, a little bit of financial impact and I mean, I am a business. People pay me for that, that fun time, that service. So not having that does affect me financially. It affects the instructors or staff that I have, so they can't come to work, they don't get paid. They are, a lot of them are local residents that do come and help us out. You know, there's, being a local shop, not being given this, well, the thing is with a local shop, we get customers in our place. They're there, they park here, they're here for the day. They will either shop before a lesson or go out and have a good time on the lesson, come back, maybe get ice cream, maybe have food, go shopping. Sometimes the family doesn't necessarily watch maybe the young kid having a surf lesson and they go walking around. So basically what we do is we have guests here that are staying within our own little community, supplying other businesses with business that we have. So I think we kind of aged that and I think that falls into the good business model that we try and project. I'm not sure that that necessarily occurs with outlying surf schools when they come and bring students in. It may or may not happen, but it's something that definitely happens with us when we're There, you know, the other part of the financial thing is we already turned down lessons this year, approximately about ten lessons that we've turned down this year. And the other component is during the winter season or holiday season, there was actually gift certificates that we handed out that now we have to look at and if I can't provide surf lessons anymore, now it's going to, again, I have to explain to them that I can't do it, I have to return money and then give them to one of the other permitted schools if they want to still surf here in Capitola.
You seem to need to wrap up, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah. With all that being said, I encourage you and urge you to please reconsider the denial for us to provide surf lessons. This is the only location for us that we do provide any type of surf lesson, so without that, then it's a big, it is a big loss for us, okay?
You can remain there. We've got a couple of questions for you.
So to me, you're a local business?
Yes, sir.
You're a local guy, you know the local people here and those are the ones you employ?
Yes, sir.
You're local as far as I'm concerned. That's what we want. And visitors that come here to a local business and turn away because they can't get the services that they would expect, their shop shuts as yours, that's not good. I'm trying to get a human, more of a human experience of what you're going through when you have kids and parents come into your store. The mayor said we don't have too much time, but can you give me a little bit of idea how that goes so I get a sense of how your business runs?
Whether it's, whether it's, you know, a twenty-year-old to, you know, a five-year-old that wants to, you know, the parents come in for a surf lesson, there's just an extreme amount of joy on their part. Most of our guests, whether they're local or from far away, they definitely want that dream, that California thing of surfing the West Coast. And so when that is actually achieved through our shop, it's, you should see the smile on their face. There's nothing better than taking people out, showing them and encouraging them and making them have a great time out there. Not having that ability is, it's kind of heartbreaking in a way. It hurts me because I don't feel like I'm giving my best. I feel like I'm falling short if I have to tell somebody, no, I can't do that. It's not a good feeling and I don't wish it really on anybody, you know, as that's running a business, for sure.
Thank you.
I do want to say that I have a list, I don't know if you want to see it, somewhere near a hundred signatures that kind of created my own petition, walking through the village, talking to local residents, business owners, that by them signing us, they were in support, in agreement that as a local business, we need to take care of our local businesses and they'd like to see us be taken care of.
You can give those to the city treasurer right there, she'll take them. Councilman Chairman, you had a question?
You're still able to rent and give?
Correct.
Still able to rent equipment? You're still able to give stand-up paddle lessons?
Correct.
It's the break, the surf break, surfing lessons that you're not able to give?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open this up to the public. And remember, this is a public forum here. You'll be allowed three minutes to speak, so come up, please, and if you have anything you'd like to offer at this point. No one? We'll go ahead and close the public forum. I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Would you like to start?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd like to be a late speaker.
Sure, come on up. The late Ed. Was that a change of heart? Did you not understand I was trying to get you up here?
I appreciate it.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure I didn't make a mistake. Go ahead.
My heart goes out to Jason. I'm also a local business owner and I've been doing this for many decades. I'm Ed Guzman from the Club Ed Surf School. And if I was in the same position, I would be teaching on the right side of the Capitola Wharf instead of turning people away. I'd take them right down there and go up to the break called Hoopers or Trees, which I've seen Jason out there several times doing stand-up paddle lessons while I've been doing stand-up paddle lessons there. And so in this business, we have to get creative. The city went through the process. I've been at the meetings. I could have also been denied, which was mentioned last time, and I was ready for It's a difficult situation. My heart goes out to them. I know that the city gets very creative in the way they do things. Five schools is a lot for only eight spaces. Every time that we have people that go, I have a group of four and we want to do this, or I have a group of eight or whatever, we have to all communicate and see if we can do this so we don't go over the amount. And when there's five schools, it's tougher. Last year was much more difficult than any other year prior when we had a fifth school. It's a tough one. So I just wanted to say you guys are doing a great job and I think that Chief Giuliani...
Escalante.
Escalante, excuse me.
He's related to Giuliani.
He'll talk to you about that later. I knew I was going to blow it there.
You're doing fine.
Secret's out.
I'm just calling Chief. Anyway, he's had a great job with his staff to do his due diligence and it's a process. It sounded like it was tough. Good luck.
Thanks for coming up. Anybody else, a second chance here, change of heart, want to come up and speak?
DJ?
Are you up? Are you?
Up.
Oh, you're up, okay. Took the long way around.
You got to think about what you're going to say, huh?
No, I was just checking to see if Andy was going to get up and speak, but I just wanted to clarify the ordinance and you're probably aware of this. Hoopers is part of that surf school area, so it goes all the way from Hoopers all the way down to Toes. So that all is included in the ordinance, so he would be precluded also from that area.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification, Andy.
I was going to add that because from what I understand, Hoopers and Trees is not. Trees is not, but Trees is...
Can we get a, can we get a clarification on that?
I was going to invite Chief Escalante. Do you have an opinion to?
Oh, his are not opinions, his are all.
Mr. Mayor, I can just settle this. It's Capitola, Main Beach, Hoopers Beach, First Jetty Break, Main Peak Break, Hoopers Break, Toes, so.
Thank you.
Those are the breaks.
Great teamwork there, fellas. Great teamwork there, fellas, all right. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing there, and bring it back to council.
You know, it wasn't long ago that we were asked to decide this, once and for all. We determined, especially since an enormous break like Cowell's is restricted to four schools, that we felt four was more than enough. It had run with four for a long time. If we were to go to five and say, only eight students, I can see some real difficulty in coordination, even for somebody as close as our two Capitola city surf schools, where they get two students, walk up and want a surf lesson right now, and they walk out there, and there's eight students. So I really feel for Capitola Surf and Paddle, but you know, we asked the chief to come up with a process, and he did. I think that in hindsight, there's probably some alterations in the questions for next year that could take place, that may weigh a little more heavily on a Capitola surf school, but you know, between Santa Cruz and Capitola, it's a small place. I'm having a really hard time doing two things, going back on what we said before, which was four surf schools, which is what it's always been, and also undermining the police department. And I think if we grant this appeal, it seriously undermines the process the police department went through. They put a lot of thought into it, they had a very unbiased panels looking at these things, and I believe that anything but sticking to the ordinance that we just voted on would be detrimental to the morale of the way the police department functions. So I am in favor of denying the appeal. And by the way, one last thing, I've had experience, you know, in many activities in town with Santa Cruz Surf and Paddle, and they're well-respected, they're a good operation, they do good work, they're engaged in the community, so this is in no way am I trying to, you know, diss a local business, and yet, I will have to do that in favor of not dissing my own police department, and that's the bottom line.
I'm going to take an opposite position on that. That was my position originally, that I think it's really important for us to be consistent. But we put the police department in this situation at our last meeting, when we said four only, because then they had to go back and find a criteria to apply to these applications, and then score them.
We said it at four, five years ago.
I know, I know, but it's really hard, because as it's been said a couple of times, a new person's never going to get on the list if all four people are continuing to do a good job and don't drop off, that you're never going to have a new person. What I'd like to do is try five, and see how it works out, see if there's a big traffic jam out there, see if they get into a big fight about whose turn it is to get out there now, but at least let them do that, because I don't think it's undermining the police department, I think that we put them in a really difficult position, and by opening it up to five, then I think it'll work, that there are five qualified people, five people with experience and so forth, and it's worked before, I'd like to try it again, just to, so that we don't disadvantage an experienced local business that's been here. You know, I thought about that afterwards, like, okay, we talked about it maybe afterwards, okay, we decided on four, somebody's going to get turned down, and that somebody is a good operator, whoever it is, they're all good operators. Why are we doing that? Just to limit it to eight students? This whole process has been a little squirrely, it's been an odd process, so it's not our best work, shall we say. So you know, I just want to try to clean it up a little bit, see where we can move forward. You know, I liked the letter from the BIA that just said, you know, "They've been doing a good job, let them try." And because it's just, who are you going to say no to, you know, in a good conscience? I mean, if somebody's had problems, you know, you could say, "No, you can't have a permit this year," but they've all done a great job, so how do you decide? It is tough, and so maybe we try everybody, see how it works out. I don't really want to keep talking about this every year, though.
Is that a motion?
Well, I'd like to hear everybody else's comments first.
Councilmember Chairman? So it really hits me when I see such large community support for an individual business. That says a lot to me. You know, business downtown in the Esplanade, where, you know, it's been said, is the heartbeat of Capitola. It represents a lot to me that so many people down there, including the letters that we've received, supports this business. So it's not about him, it's not about the business. I think people clearly want that business in town. And I am swayed by the argument that if a visitor comes to Capitola, and they find that they can't be served here in Capitola, and they have to go to some other vendor outside of this area to get that service, I think we're doing our city a disservice. We have people, I've been in business, when someone walks in the door, and you turn them away because you don't have product, or you don't have service, that's not how you do business. So I don't want city policy that's going to allow that practice to continue. Now, I agree with Mike, that this was a process that we set up, and I think, you know, we put the chief in a really hard position. But the bottom line to me, really, is, I didn't hear any negative experience from Chief Rudy, which I highly respect him, and I also know that he would tell us if there was problems with the four schools or the five schools. That's his job, he would tell us. So I don't know how the questionnaire was put together, but I think I would have had a heck of a lot more waiting in there for businesses that were from Capitola. So I'm going to go five.
Is that a motion?
I would definitely make a motion.
So your motion is two?
How did we put this?
There's three choices on the list here.
No, I forgot what it is. Definitely, I want to uphold the appeal, basically. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second. Deny the appeal or uphold the appeal?
Mr. City Attorney would like to.
The three actions would be required in order to implement that direction.
We'd have to deny the appeal.
I'm sorry, items two and three. Uphold the appeal, direct staff to prepare an ordinance amending Municipal Code Section 9.30.020, and amend administrative policy I-34 subsection 3B to permit five surf schools.
Second.
Tony, you couldn't have said it better. I couldn't have said it better.
Yes, I could have.
Thank you very much. I would like an amendment, though.
Amendment to your own motion? Just add an addition to your own motion.
I have a question, excuse me. Is there anything in that ordinance that deals with the survey or the questionnaire?
Councilmember Bertrand, Mr. Mayor, the policy itself is actually what governs the issuance of the permit, so the policy itself would be coming back in the context of the ordinance. So yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, I'm going to weigh in a little bit here before we go.
After you, further discussion.
And you have further discussion? Would you like to comment now?
No.
Okay, good.
Do you hear what I'm saying? Oh, absolutely.
Comment here for me is, Capitola Village has 11 restaurants, four coffee shops, and two wine bars, and they all get along, and they don't complain about each other. This is a problem created by the surf schools, that I believe has put us, the police chief, in a position where you're wasting our time. The intent of the original surf school, the intent, was to limit the amount of surfers in the water, and we've never wavered on that point, that we want eight people in the water. A number of four was come up with, just like there is in Santa Cruz. And when I talk to Santa Cruz, I talked to Carol in the Recreation Department today about their surf school. To have a permit in a surf school in Santa Cruz is $1,000. To have a permit in Capitola is $50. Now, if Capitola was to raise its permit fees to $1,000, I wonder if all those schools from Capitola would come and still continue to pay them. Here in Capitola, we have the limit at $50 because we're trying to encourage the business. Last year, when we made the decision to change the policy to limit it at four, one of the schools, Cliff Hodge, failed to read the application and apply. He came in to us on his knees, saying, "I'm out of business." So this council allowed an extension to create five to accommodate him. And then this year, he writes a letter to us that says that we should uphold the chief's decision. Well, the fact of the matter is, the chief's decision that he gave us in November, when we asked him, "Is there a problem with having five surf schools?" Over and over again, his sergeant and him told us there was no problem. But yet, comments were made, and one of the competitors brought up a list of complaints that this council took as verbatim as to what was going on in the water. Just like today, one told us that it's okay to go surf in Hoopers, when the fact is, it's not. So what I want to do is, I want to validate my police chief. I want to validate what he said back in November, that five surf schools is not a problem. What I want to put this on is those five surf schools to have to figure out a way to get along. And there's another letter that was written, and I want to talk about symptom and cause. If you have a runny nose, that's the symptom. The cause of that is you probably have a cold. And we were told that we were inaccurate when we said that the ordinance was amended because one person got left out. The symptom was that one person did get left out. The cause was, surfing is booming, there's an interest. You know it, we know it, we all look in the water, our police chief knows it, we are all impacted by surfing. The one thing I feel the strongest about is, is I'm committed to trying to maintain City of Capitola preference. If I were to come back with this body, and we were to rewrite this ordinance, I would probably suggest that we limit it to Capitola businesses only, which would not be good for any of the other surf schools. So my position here is, I've got a business in Capitola, I've got a brick and mortar business that provides a service, I have two brick and mortar businesses to provide service. I think that's wonderful for the village. I think it's wonderful to give people an option on where to go, and I want to allow these other surf schools also. But if you push me into a corner and ask me to pick and choose who I'm going to support, it's going to be local business. So I support you, Stephanie, for wanting to say local business, and you too, Jacques. And I know, Mike, that, you know, I know you believe that also, but I think what we did last time was, I don't think we acknowledged our police chief. I think that this time, we need to support his original decision, and I support the measure to go back to five. And I would like to have, you know, when we do the ordinance, I would like to see that ordinance, that questionnaire, be more of a questionnaire that provides a preference for local business. Because I can say this on an open mic, I can say this on TV, I am committed to supporting Capitola businesses. So with that, I'd like to call for a vote on the motion. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Mike, that's okay.
I just want to remind the council that the original surf ordinance, which has been in place for many years, many more than the one year we allowed the five surf schools, was cobbled together by not only staff, but the police department and all the surf schools in the area, not just four. There were a dozen surf schools in that room when this ordinance was written. It was not done in 20 minutes at council meeting, it was not done in a vacuum, it was done with people who surf the break daily and teach, and four is what they came up with. And I'm not a surfer, so I don't know what I'm talking about, when I talk about surf schools, but I know, I sat in a couple of those meetings, and I know all the people in that room knew what they were talking about, and the number that always came up was four. We've only done five once. If we're keeping it a maximum of eight students, I can guarantee you, we're going to be working our lifeguards and police department, because there's a reason we held it for. I'm not going to vote for the motion, but I understand, and I echo many of the things that everyone said. And if anything were to happen, I would say that we keep it the way it is, and review the questionnaire to weight it towards local business. And remember, we're looking at a difference between local and non-local of a mile, okay? I just want to undermine the xenophobia that's taking place here. And I love them all, I don't want anybody to be hurt financially, but I'm also thinking about the safety of surfers, of students, of instructors, and of everyone in the water. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thanks, ladies and gentlemen. Anybody else want to weigh in? With that, Sue, can we please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Harlan?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Chairman?
No.
Mayor Batov?
Aye.
That motion carries three to one, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 115 San Jose Avenue, a conceptual review of mercantile redevelopment development proposal. Katie, you're going to be doing this?
I am, thank you.
Before you this evening is a conceptual review for 115 San Jose at the Mercantile. The conceptual review includes 11 new residential units, a master use permit for the Mercantile, and a covered parking garage with a lift system. This is the existing condition site plan for the Mercantile. You can see the Mercantile in blue in the middle. The Mercantile is just over 7,000 square feet in size. There's also a 1,700-square-foot apartment on the second floor with parking underneath. The current surface parking is shown in yellow. The onsite parking is currently used as a public paid parking lot. On this slide, the new infill building is outlined in red. The first story is comprised of a garage with two lobbies, one on each entrance. Along the Esplanade, a walkway will lead to the front lobby. The access to the garage is similar to the existing cars entering off the Esplanade and exiting out of San Jose Avenue. This is the second-story floor plan. There are 11 new units proposed. The majority of the units are approximately 450 square feet. The largest unit is 730 square feet. Units are accessed off of a shared hallway along the back wall. This is a cross-section of the garage with the condo flat above the private terrace, above with a private terrace. On the left side of the slide is a typical layout for the majority of the units. The arrow points to the location of the small kitchen. Each unit has a seven-foot-long kitchen counter with a sink, two burners, and under the counter fridge and cabinets above. This is the elevation as seen from San Jose Avenue. In this image, you're seeing the windows of units one, two, and three on the east side of the building. Below is the garage door, which would exit onto San Jose Avenue. The design has stepped back from the property line to incorporate two planners, creating variety in the wall plane and interest at the pedestrian level. The second-story bay windows and can leave the third unit also create variation within This is the existing view from San Jose of the elevation we were just looking at. You can see there are numerous trees that would have to be removed to accommodate the infill project, but the new wall plane would go across this frontage. This is the elevation as seen from the Esplanade. The lobby entrance is located to the left, this portion of the building is closest to the street. The garage is located about 15 feet back from the lobby. The massing is stepped along the frontage and the existing patio area, and the front of the Mercantile is maintained. So you can see the Mercantile building off to the right, and then the building is set And here's the existing, the current view from the Esplanade. The small building on the left side will be removed within this concept, so the Slow Coast, where Slow Coast is currently, would be removed. This is the adjacent property at 112 Stockton, and I just want to bring to your attention that it's also a part of this property and is owned by the same property owner. There are residential units above and two commercial units below. And this is an image of the existing... And this is an image of the existing residential units that were approved in 2003. And there's covered parking below the existing units. The Mercantile is a unique property with over 7,000 square feet of multi-tenant commercial mix and onsite parking. Many of the properties within the village are limited in terms of intensifying their uses due to the absence of onsite parking. The Mercantile has onsite parking, so the intensity of use can be considered on this property. Each time a new tenant comes in, when there's a vacancy, we have a lot of questions that come in from the public at the planning counter, asking for, if, for instance, we had a brewery recently that came in that was interested, and we've had questions about restaurants. And each time, we say the steps to going, to get a conditional use permit, the first step is that we'd have to update a parking study to ensure that the parking demand can be met onsite. So the, after quite a few inquiries, staff has worked with the owner and the representative and has suggested that they take a look at doing a parking study for the site and figure out what can the site handle. So within this conceptual review, the applicant is asking for feedback on a master use permit and that's tied to the new parking limits within the parking study. So some of the findings within the study that was completed by Marcus Transportation Engineering, they found that the site can handle the condominium units that are proposed. And also, within the study, the engineer found that the site could handle 4,400 square feet of restaurant space. And then the remainder of the Mercantile would remain retail or personal service establishments. If a master use permit were approved for the site, the new applicants for restaurants would be subject to an administrative review rather than going to Planning Commission, as long as the new maximum square footage for restaurant use is not exceeded. This would remove risk and decrease review time for new businesses seeking to locate within the Mercantile. The parking study did not consider that the owner would like to continue to utilize the site as a paid parking lot. This was brought to our attention after the review of the parking study. The central village has a high demand for public parking, especially during summer months and due to its location close to the beach. By maintaining the lots as a public lot, the demand for the spaces not only comes from tenants within the Mercantile, but also should consider the greater public coming to the village. There is a precedence in the village that properties cannot be intensified without adequate parking. If the parking were limited to patrons, employees, and residents, the study found that the demand could be met onsite. The applicant is seeking direction from the city council on the conceptual review. On February 4th, the Planning Commission reviewed the concept, and some of the comments that were received were, there are few concerns about the parking, there were definite concerns about the parking reduction proposed in the parking study. Also, the master use permit, there was not comfort with allowing an administrative review due to the impact that restaurants and bars can have on the general area and adjacent properties. They'd like more control in reviewing those. Also, there was discussion on the studio efficiencies, and they were explained to be condos, but there was some concern about the vacation rentals. The design that was received well, they thought it was well-designed, but overall, the Planning Commission, there is an echoing desire to have the whole property looked at. They thought there's existing failure within the Mercantile design to bring in people from the street due to the way it's designed from the inside, and really, you've got to get into the Mercantile to know what's happening within the Mercantile. So they thought there should be a more holistic review in the design and incorporate the And that concludes my presentation. And Matthew Thompson is here, the architect as well. Thank you.
Any questions from staff?
Am I to understand, from my reading of this, the parking study was done with the 4,400 square feet of restaurants and so on and so forth, taking into account all the onsite parking? And yet, the proposal is to not limit the onsite parking to the restaurants and the residences?
That's correct. Yeah, it would be for the greater public to also utilize.
And pay for.
And pay for.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are they required to put an elevator into those living units on the second floor? Is that shown on the plans?
I would have.
Let me, the conceptual plans.
Matthew?
Yes. For you.
Yes.
Doc? This is an open hearing, and maybe we can hear from the presenter first?
Good evening, Matthew Thompson with Thatcher &amp; Thompson Architects, representing the owners on this one. I'm going to kind of take you on a tour of how we've approached the project, and then we can kind of get into the meat of the questions. I think a place to start, really, is that the portion of this property that had the most obvious potential was the fact that it included an uncovered parking lot, which we discourage in the village, and it was exposed to San Jose Avenue and Esplanade, which we also, in our new zoning ordinance, suggest that we don't really want. Surface parking lots don't add anything to the ambiance of the village. So the first thought was, okay, why don't we put the parking lot into a garage? And that way, we can improve the appearance from Esplanade and from San Jose Avenue. And once you've made the garage, so why just a roof? Can we actually make the second floor usable? And in the village, that means housing. Our approach to the housing was really to take a, if you will, a village or urban-scaled housing unit, and the average size is 500 square feet. These are obviously small units, but let's remember that the U.S. Census tells us that 25% of our households are single-person households, one out of four, just has one person in them. So designing units that are entirely appropriate for a single person isn't exactly an odd thing to do. It really just recognizes that we have an undersupplied housing element for small households. There is no concern on our part that there will be limitations on using these for short-term occupancies or that sort of thing. I think the city knows how to deal with visitors. And I have complete confidence that any rules that Capitola needs to meet its housing goals and visitor-serving goals can be attached to the design as needed. We also use this new building as a chance to, if you will, demonstrate some of the things that are being included in your new zoning ordinance. For instance, the size of the building elements along San Jose Avenue being broken down into smaller building shapes. My favorite part, and could we have, Katie, the site plan, the proposed site plan? One of the things that came out of this, and I'll admit that it evolved in a way that was a little unexpected to us even while we worked on it, the biggest change was on the Esplanade, because the area of this site in front of the Mercantile, off of the Esplanade, has essentially been a parking lot forever. And the owners have tried to gentrify it by adding nicer paving, and this past year, a fountain, and landscaping, but it still functions basically as a parking lot, the gates out at the sidewalk. Well, one of the things that we realized is that by putting the parking in the garage, we could take the parking off of this plaza. We could take the plaza, and yes, we'd have to have a driveway through to the door, to the garage, but on the one side, towards the Mercantile, we could do outdoor café seating that actually looked like it was in an outdoor plaza, because it didn't have cars parking in it. And on the other side, we could do something that I think would be a wonderful addition to the village, which is a little park with trees and green and plants and park benches. And that's the, on the drawing here, the left side, which becomes the new entrance to the housing element, but also provides the space necessary to have the valet parking and the onsite management. One of the things that in the four years that I've been working on this project really came home to roost was that the advent of a full-time onsite manager to manage the parking system and everything else, that time had come. That's never not going to be the case anymore. It is a property that needs to have that kind of presence. And that meant that there was no impediment to using the lifts, the so-called parking machines, because they really need that kind of onsite personnel.
Go ahead and take about another minute to wrap up, and I'll ask you some questions.
Okay. Let me, whoo. Let me dash into the use permit for a second. I think one of the wonderful things about Capitola is that you use a use permit to really manage what goes on in the village. And we're not looking to get out of use permit review, but we do think that there would be benefits for treating the whole property under a master use permit that then allows for a lower-level administrative review of individual tenants. That's not an unusual thing, and I don't think you'd be giving up any control whatsoever. Back to the parking, the owners are in total agreement that it should stay public parking. The only people who, that's definitely better for the city. There's more, a larger parking supply for the public. The people who might be discouraged by this would be the individual tenants, but the individual tenants would actually, quite frankly, have the customers parking right next to their business than have the ability to brag that somehow they have better parking than their rival tenants in the village. So I think there's only good reasons for keeping it a public lot. But to get the certainty that, in fact, there's an appropriate match between the intensity of the uses and the parking supply, we think that a parking study should be part of creating this. We've already done one. We are convinced that a parking study's done in the future will confirm the conclusions that we've come to, that something like the mix of uses that we proposed is reasonable, that it will stand up to close scrutiny. And so, we would like to see the parking demand on this site measured by the best available parking analysis that can be found professionally. If the city has concerns about the report done by the applicant, the applicant will pay to have it peer-reviewed. If the peer reviewers and the applicant consultant don't agree, they can choose a third one to settle it, but we should keep the question of parking in the hands of the best available information.
Do you have any final comments here?
I think that's, you know, actually, one last thing. I'd appreciate a vote tonight. The Planning Commission didn't vote, but it would be really helpful for us, as we figure out how to move forward with this, to have a sense of the will of the council. It doesn't need to be a thumbs up or thumbs down approval of the project, but give us some direction. And with that, all right.
I have a question. Before you step down, I have a couple of questions. Go ahead. Hi, Matthew. I understand about the retail tenants shouldn't necessarily have preferential parking in the parking lot next to their businesses, but what about when you're renting 10 hotel rooms, basically, efficiencies? Wouldn't we come to expect to have their parking spaces located where they're renting their hotel room?
Absolutely. And the parking plan that we, draft parking plan that we put forward, that's absolutely guaranteed, that each resident has a space assigned, and there are two guest spaces as well. We're trying, in fact, to meet the city's parking standards as closely as we can. So the way the valet parking would work is that, in fact, the residents would always have availability to their space.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Question?
I heard you say that the residents would also have guest spaces?
Well, that's in the city zoning ordinance, and so we've included, those would not be assigned spaces. Those would be public spaces, but we have included those spaces within our parking count.
So there's 11 rooms, and so let's just say one car per room, and then a guest comes. So now we need 22, or maybe there's two guests, so it's up to three. So if it's a paid situation where a bunch of tourists and visitors are in all the paid spots, there's definitely no spot for the guests?
No, the guests have to compete with the other visitors to the beach, and for those of us that have lived in beach communities, we know that endless parking is not one of the options.
So they have to compete for something that was guaranteed?
No, they have to compete. The two spaces for guests have the same status as the spaces for the commercial tenants.
I see. Okay.
That seems fair.
If I buy a unit, then I get one for myself and one for my two guests, but my two guests will have to compete for the public?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Just a little curiosity about the lifts. In your research on this, so I went online, checked out a bunch of lift companies and such like that, but I could not find, spent about an hour or two, I could not find where it's actually used in an architectural situation like this, a hotel or an apartment house or, I mean, I found things that were like, when I'm familiar with, in San Francisco, off at Columbus, you know, it's like a huge silo or something like that, obviously totally different, but I did not find anything like this for a public parking area. Did you find that? Is it?
Yeah, there's an interesting one to see at the Clement Hotel in Cannery Row, down Cannery Row in Monterey. There are the same-sized lifts, they just hold one car up, one car underneath. It's done by valet parking, and it works just fine. I mean, one of the things that goes with this is that it does require attendant parking, but the management of the lot right now is done with a manager, so this isn't a radical departure at all.
Okay, so that was done for a hotel, and how much time of the day is the attendant available at that hotel?
Well, I don't know the exact operations of the Clement Hotel, and I probably should have got that answer, so I'd have it in my back pocket. But what we did, because they have had attendants managing the lot now for more than a year, we just said, so when do the existing surface spaces fill up? And it's between 10:00 and 11:00 in the morning, and when does there come to be spaces available in the parking lot? And the answer is 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night. So in our draft, we suggested that those would be the hours where there would actually be not just somebody onsite, but somebody capable of doing valet parking.
Right. So my travels in business, I expect the valet to get my car anytime of the day? And yours from 10:00 in the morning to, I forget what you do?
That would be the only time you would need to not be able to self-park. The attendant really is to make sure that the cars that are on the upper-level lift are always available.
Right, and that's it?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Would like the rest of the public come up, and anyone else in the public like to speak
My name is Bob Etmore, and I own the building in the village that contains the Village Mouse and Thomas Kinkade Gallery, and I feel that this project is too large for our little village, and just be a lot of big trucks going around for months, and it will hurt a lot of businesses, and especially the Thomas Kinkade Gallery, because it's right next to this project. And I just, I can't see why the city would approve this, because it's taken another parking lot in our little village, and we need that. So I'd go to big N.O. So I'd go to big N.O.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else like to come up and speak?
My name's Jim Austin, I'm her son, and the guy came and showed us the plans, they're building right up against our wall, where we have some windows, and he said, he's just going to build his wall covering our windows, doesn't matter to them what they do. So I don't know what, you know, plans get approved by, you know, the city, but it just seems kind of weird. And then they want to put the lifts with the cars right on the other side of that wall, so I guess we'll have the sound of the lifts lifting the cars right on the other side of our wall. So it would really affect our business being right there, you know, like that. I don't think it'll be very, I'd vote for the library instead.
Can I ask you a quick question? Did they, I wonder if you can, whether you can feel the vibrations or hear the noise in another building? I'd be curious to know if you can. Do you have display things there, or do you have storage things there?
Yeah, we have panions all over the walls with lights on them, so if they shake around, you know, the lights probably shake too, and it just, you know, interrupts everything. It just seems to stop it.
That's what I'd be curious to know, whether you can feel the vibrations or not.
Yeah, we asked him about that when he came out and showed us the plans, and he said that he didn't know how much noise they made or anything, so.
Hi, Tom Austin, I'm part of the family too that owns the adjacent building to the project, and we reviewed this, or were approaching this several years back, and for whatever reason, it didn't go through. We probably all agree there's room for improvement on that whole site, but this is a pretty big project. They said that existing building, 7,000 square foot, this almost dwarfs the mercantile. And then the other concern that I have is the noise. The parking garage is right up against the retail location, I don't know if those are hydraulic, electric, and we're serving clients in there throughout the day, and we've got these elevators going up and down. So I just found out they were approaching this, reviewing this, this last Monday, so I didn't have much time to really research into it, but I think it's a big project. But if it can improve the village, if it can help with the foot traffic and the coziness of the village in some way, that's a good thing. So there's pluses and minuses in my eye.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else like to speak on the mercantile proposal? Seeing that, and we'll close the public forum, bring it back to council.
Sure. Michael, go ahead. First of all, you know, people owning those units, that's not where this is going. This is a vacation rental, so I could see, single car, I understand that, sounds good. On the plus side, it's not really high by village standards, 27 feet, but I certainly appreciate it being side-by-side to other buildings, and that's also the village, side-by-side with other buildings. As usual, you know, Matthew Thompson has not, even with this project, has yet to disappoint me with regard to beauty of design. It's a beautiful building. I might also point out that no business in the village provides their own parking. Think about that. No one.
There's a store where the massage on the next to wine time, that has a little lot in the back.
There is, there are the-
There might be a-
Okay.
Technically, she's correct. Got to give it to her, she's correct.
And there's the little store.
True.
Quite a quality park.
And yet, you know, that's two out of 50, so, you know, I'm not going to, but, you know, the idea that a parking study uses spaces to justify space and then rents them out by the hour, something uncomfortable about that. The biggest concern I have with this whole thing is it's piecemeal on the mercantile property. We begrudgingly approved the condos in the front of the mercantile, we'll approve something behind the mercantile, and the historic building remains in the middle. I'm sure if we decided to turn this back into a bowling alley, this place would be filled with people who wouldn't want it, even though that's what it was. It's, I can appreciate the owner's concern, because it's a historic building, and yet it's a building that is way past its prime. I would love to see that whole site leveled and something nice put there, that's integrated together. With regard to the use permit, I am very much in favor of that. I believe we, this mercantile needs a use permit to allow them to rent it as they need to. And I don't think rental of every space in there, even up to 4,000 square feet of restaurant, is going to impact the parking significantly in the village. Any more than one of our favorites, Paradise Grill, being remodeled and being able to be filled for two or three turns a night as a restaurant, impacted the village. It's just another place in the village. But we torture the mercantile because it's so piecemeal. I really, really am in favor of the use permit for the mercantile. I am not, I am sad to say, in favor of this particular construction project in this particular space unless it became part of a larger design for the entire property. Thank you. I just dropped the mic.
I'll go next. I would really love to see something done there, as we all would. It's an old, you know, building that does need a facelift and needs to be sort of reimagined. Maybe we could get the library lady back here again to help us with that. She has a really good eye for reusing spaces and imagining spaces, and Matthew does, you know, beautiful, beautiful, beautiful work. Watched the whole planning commission meeting, thought it was a really good meeting, really good discussion, lots of really good comments for everyone, and so I think I understand the project pretty well. I think, I mean, I think these questions are really good, that Katie proposed, does the proposed architectural style complement the village? Well, of course it does, it's beautiful, it's beautiful. Is the proposed scale compatible with the surrounding development? No, I don't, you know, I have a concern also with the wall next to Kincaid and the wall also next to the other side of the building, that is closing that area off, walled wall, zero lot line, even when it has a little park there, so I'm a little bit concerned about that. Really concerned about the parking, and, you know, anytime, you know, we're still, we're still waiting for the Barry Swenson's Hotel, and so, you know, while we can't wait on these things, you know, very long, you know, if other buildings want to improve and remodel and so forth, we still need, that's sort of the elephant in the room. We don't know how much parking, we're going to have need for that, how much impact that's going to have, how much traffic that's going to cause, you know, exactly what that's going to do, so anyway, we can't wait for that, because maybe nothing will ever happen. But, you know, I think this is a little too dense for the village. People now, everybody, as you know, they're just floored by the traffic everywhere, and, you know, and then they're going to say, oh, you built this, and we're getting, and the cities and the county are doing a lot of infill developments, high-density infill developments, so the traffic is going to get worse. And neighbors are starting to say, wait a minute, how much worse? How much can we tolerate? And there's discussion in Santa Cruz, in the Soquel corridor, in the Water Street corridor, about going way up, and, you know, in the county, and, you know, so things are here are not going to get better unless we can get that, the bus fellow to put lots more buses on the road. So I'm just, I'm just really, as a Capitola council member, I'm just cautious about really, really dense developments anywhere, because it's just adding to the existing problem, especially in the village, especially in the village, where we have taken away a lot of parking places in the past, and when we widened the sidewalks and did other things. So not in favor of it right now, it's beautiful design, but I'd love to see something else in the future, preferably a whole redesign of the whole site, it could be very exciting, could be very exciting. And I don't know what, but parking's important, the design's important, the uses are important. I don't think, I'm not in favor of a master use plan right now, because we just don't know what's going on here. There's too many, too many unknowns for me to get interested in a master use plan right now.
So I, just to let you know what I told Mike off to the side, I guess, is like, how come when he says something, I've got to rethink everything, and I could say the same thing about Steph? And that's why you have five people, excuse me, four people up here, but usually five. So I agree, the architecture seems attractive. You know, I came by and talked with you, Tom, and, you know, you saw what I showed you, I gave you the plans, and, you know, one of the things you said is like, wow, maybe we could break out some storefronts here along San Jose. I like a guy that thinks for the future, you know, that might be something good for your property, it might be good for San Jose, it might be good for Capitola. I like that, and that shows some thought, I think that is good. So if a project doesn't go through on this property, maybe that won't happen. I don't know, just a thought. I've read some of the letters, there are issues with the view, and, you know, we can't protect view, unfortunately. I think everyone knows that. You don't like to use your view, just like earlier you said you don't like to lose your windows, and, you know, a lot line window, unfortunately, there's no way legally, I mean, we just don't protect that. This is the way it is. I've been here almost 20 years, but the more I've been here, the more I realize I'm really a young man, and I don't know half the stuff that goes on here. But, you know, I've read the letters, and some of them allude to things that were promised in the past. And, you know, I know there's issues that are relationship, relational ship issues, and like I told you, Tom, you know, to me, this is, and you didn't say that, but to me, this is a decision on the merits of the plan. But I still give pause, and so, you know, I talked with Rich earlier today, yesterday, excuse me, and it seems there's probably a history of promises, things that the property owner has promised to the tenants, in terms of parking especially, and I would like city planning to go back and do research, and what are the conditions that have been put on this property as developments have been made, and have we followed suit on that? And too many people have told me that the property owner has promised this and promised that, I don't know what has been codified in our use permits, I'd like to know that. So to me, that's a starting spot. And then when I hear that history, and I hear that the applicant wants a use, a master plan, I have concerns. So in my mind, I want to settle, is this just rumor, or, you know, I want to get a good handle on, you know, how good the owner has been to the tenants in terms of promising things, and how much the owner has kept up the bargain with the city. And I do know that 30 years ago, for whatever, you know, maybe something was put in the condition of use permit, or whatever it was, and we sort of forgot it. And that's just the way things are. The other issue I have with a use, a plan, what's it called, a master use permit, is I think some things really deserve a full hearing for the public, because depending on the use, it could change the way things happen in the village, and that may be good, that may be bad, but one thing I stand for, that's why I'm here, that's why I ran, is I think the public should always have a time to view and comment and be a part of the process, the process that us five are only a part of also. The way I look at it is the public has an equal time at the table. So I don't want a master plan that excludes and makes it short-circuited so that the public finds out about it afterwards, for instance. I'm not saying that's the way it's going to be. I have a lot of faith in our planning department, but I want as much chance for the public to weigh in on things, and I think in the long run, we'll get better decisions. I am worried about the density increase, as Stephanie talked about, but if you increase density, and just like Tom started thinking about, oh, what, maybe if this happens, there's going to be more traffic, you know, I was in business, you have more traffic, you have more potential for your businesses, and that's a good thing. So you can't say no density. But what I look at here is I see a cobbled-together project. It doesn't have any beauty to me. I mean, yeah, the architecture for that particular front, you know, but the overall thing, it's sort of, I'm trying to reflect what Mike said, you know, it's just like, it's sort of a kludge, you know, that they're trying to make it work. And I've known people who have been in the mercantile, and sometimes I wonder how they survive, and what is the end solution that would really work for the property owner? So I'm sort of supporting Stephanie here, that, you know, maybe, maybe this thing should be revisited. Look at the project as a whole. So I'm personally not against something that is going to be really a benefit to the city of Capitola. It may mean higher density, but it has to give something to the city that is going to add value. And that has to be a part of the public discussion. So at this point, I'm not too happy with it. I honestly don't believe lifts will work. I have a neighbor down the street, he puts his car up in the lift, and, you know, he doesn't want to be bringing it up and down. His wife wants to use the car, forget it, I don't want to do it. You know, it just is a problematic situation, and I can see that being very, and then the owner's promising places for visitors, that to me is disingenuous, especially if the parking's going to be available to the public. I'm sort of reflecting what Mike says. If you're promising something for someone, and then you're renting it out, you know, if someone comes in and pays the fee, that's disingenuous to me. So at this point, I'm really not for it.
When I look at the mercantile, I think of a shopping center, and I think when you design a shopping center, first thing that goes in is the anchor store. And in the village, the mercantile is that anchor store. The temptation for us right now is because we're sitting here waiting for projects. We talk about the hotel, we've been talking about the hotel for, I don't know how many years, that hotel may never happen. So I can't sit here and wait for things to come in, so when a project comes in like this, we seriously have to look at it. But the worst thing that we do is to be eager to have a project help the village, but put in the wrong project. I kind of agree with the sentiments that everybody's set here, it's, what this project does is it fills in the space, it maintains the parking, and I do acknowledge that, you know, that's your parking lot, like Mike mentioned, this is, parking was provided already by you. So it isn't like the demand for the parking you didn't meet, you met and you exceeded it. Whether the lifts work or not, that's your problem, you know, I'm not against the lifts, I'm not against technology. What I do know is that, is that if we put in, if we allow a project to go in the mercantile, we go through, like I said, I wasn't here when the first condos were done, and however that got through, it sounds like you weren't, even though it got through, you weren't happy with it. And what I wouldn't want to do now is go through a major finalization, because when I look at this map, this is done, this is what it would be like for 40 years. When I come here four years now, this is what I look at. And I don't think that's what I got from the general plan, what I got from the people of Capitola, I don't think that's, this is the kind of building they want to see in that location. If you were to come back to us with a complete redesign of the mercantile, you know, I mean, I can't promise that your building is going to not block the views of the Village Mouse and Kincaid. I mean, buildings go up, and that's part of how things happen in the village. But I look at a building down by the Tressa, one of the most recent buildings built in the village, it's the Charlie and Company, and I'm sure you're familiar with that building, and it's like, that building is built into, most people that I interact with, they like that building. And if we approve some kind of a project in the mercantile that had style and flair and, I don't care how much money you make, if you make money, good for you, it's just got to work in the village for its size, its density. I'm for expanding the village, I mean, the village parking, I think it's time that we re-look at that. relook at that, stop handcuffing the businesses in there, I think there's a way that we can do that. We're sitting around waiting for all these opportunities to happen in the village, and the fact is, they may not happen, so if we have a chance to unleash the handcuffs on some businesses, and allow more tables to have more visitors, or to accommodate a good project, it's just, I think the sense, you said you wanted to vote, I know we're not going to vote tonight, because it's not on our agenda to vote on it, but I think you got a flavor from the planning commission that they didn't like it. I don't think I really heard anybody here say, woo-hoo, we're gung ho, but I think we would be excited to see a project come in there that was a master project, so that's my two cents, and kind of go along with what everybody else says here. Do you have one last comment?
Yeah, just one last comment. I think I'd like to echo what Ed said on a different subject, and I think other members of the City Council, tell me if I'm wrong, are starting to feel the same way. Let's not hold Capitola's projects in moving forward to a hotel that may never come. And, you know, I think we just have to realize that 20 years, are we going to have a hotel? 30 years, are we going to have a hotel? How long do we wait for that to happen, as if that's the solution for things?
So, we received recommendations to accept the staff proposal, which we've done.
And can I thank the Village Mouse people for coming down? You haven't come down to one of our meetings in a long time, and you're like the salt of Capitola, you know, old-time Capitola. I know, I know.
And you all have nice things to say, thank you for that.
But, you know, you've been here forever, and we really appreciate your businesses and your involvement in Capitola forever and ever, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
So, with that, we're going to move on to item D, is a zoning code update, initiation of a public review, and that is twice?
Twice, yeah, turn her up. All right. Each of you, in front of you has a new binder, and that is the updated zoning code. So, you each have a new binder with the zoning code in front of you. The purpose of my presentation tonight is to give you a quick overview of the process, go over the code and how it's set up, and then I'll be available to answer any questions. We're not asking for any direction tonight, but really, we're just releasing the new code. So, first, here's the process that we've gone over, gone through so far. We began with stakeholder and public outreach, we drafted an issues and options paper, which was really to get all the heavy lifting done up front, and answer a lot of the policy questions. So, through a series of public hearings with the planning commission and City Council, we got your direction, and the code you have in front of you tonight is our best effort to implement the direction we received from you. And over the past three months, we've been working hard drafting the code, reviewing the code with Ben Noble, and this evening, we're distributing the code and beginning the public review of the code. So, the planning commission got their draft code on February 4th, and it also went out to the website, it's now published on the website, as well as the updated zoning map. And we also have copies, hard copies of the code at the library, and one at City Hall, or multiple at City Hall, for anyone who'd like to come in and utilize the code. We'll be going through a series of public hearings, first, starting off with the planning commission for the review of our updated code, and then to the City Council following the planning commission hearings, and an adoption hopefully by May of 2016, and from there, we'll go on to the coastal commission. The first two meetings we have lined up for the planning commission review are in March, March 3rd and March 17th. We've got a pretty light agenda for the March 3rd hearings, so we're hoping to get, we're going to have an early start of 6:00 PM, and begin our review that evening, and then a special meeting on March 17th. Once we've had these meetings, we'll have a better idea of when we'll be bringing the update to the City Council, so we'll keep you posted at a future meeting of what our plans are for your review of the new zoning code. So, now, I'll go over the code itself. There's five parts to the code. The first part is the enactment and applicability, this is very standard, it legally establishes the code, the rules for interpretation of the code, it identifies the different districts, as well as the overlay zones, and legally establishes the zoning map as well. Part two is the zoning districts and overlay zones, this is split into about three different areas. First, the land use regulations. One of the benefits of the new code is we tried to update it to make it more simple, and put a lot of the information that we had written out into table format, and easier to understand for the end user. So, as you can see, on the top left is your key, and it's the different type of permits that are necessary for the type of land use. I'm going to run through this example, the R1 is highlighted. Within the R1, the P is for permitted use, so residential care facility, that is small would be a permitted use. There's a conditional use required for a large residential care facility, and where you see the dash, it's a use that is not allowed in the zone. Over on the far-right column is additional regulations, so it'll note an area that you need to go to, to read up on the additional regulations tied to that land use. So, for a large residential care facility, you would go to a separate chapter to find out what the standards are. Also, within your zoning districts are your development standards, and your site requirements. So, within each zone, we outline what your parcel sizes need to be for your ratio, whether or not there's a covered parking minimum, and your parking standards. And again, additional standards will be on the far-right column. And then, part three is citywide standards. Within your, each code, there are standards that apply to all zones, or special circumstances that are found throughout the city, and these include your standards for height setbacks and floor area, also parking standards apply citywide, in special circumstances where you have a historic building or an accessory structure, you can find the standards there, and then also landscaping. For the permits in administration, section four, this identifies what the procedure is for each of the permits that are shown in the land use tables. So, what the requirements would be for a conditional use permit versus a minor use permit is outlined in this chapter, as well as any of the process for an appeal. And then, part five is simply the glossary. Most terms that are used throughout the zoning code are found within the glossary, and in certain chapters, such as the coastal zone, there's specific terms, specific to that chapter, that are found within the zone for the coastal zone, but typically, all the terms can be found in the glossary in the back. So, some of the overall improvements are that, the new code has a new user guide at the front of the code. There, we've reorganized the code to make it hopefully more user-friendly, and put the language in plain English, so it's easy to follow. And as I already mentioned, the tables and graphics have been included, and also, we've tried to add more definitions for terms that we utilized and not defined previously. Substantial changes are noted throughout the document, typically, a substantial change are those changes that were brought up during the issues and options review. Examples include adding new building form standards, character and design standards for mixed use, also new thresholds for design permits, and a new chapter for review modifications to historic structures. Some of the substantive changes that were not included in the issues and options, but are in the new code, are brought to your attention through these fingers that are pointing at the substantial change throughout your code. We will take these out at the final draft, but they're just to point out where are the major changes. So, one, some of the ones we did not talk about during the zoning code issue and options were, as we're going through planning commission hearings, we kept hearing a need for a minor modification chapter. These are, sometimes there's, when a variance isn't quite, it doesn't quite qualify for a variance, but there's a need for a minor modification, such as the length of a parking space. So, we've added some, a new chapter for that, and then we also moved the green building chapter to another section of the code. And also, important to note on this, because the substantial changes are notified, are brought to your attention, some of the changes that did not occur is there's no increase in density within this code, the density stays the same, it reflects what was adopted within the new general plan. And then also, parking in the village, we heard throughout the issues and options, don't change parking in the village, so that has not changed either in this code. So, as I had stated before, we do plan to have two upcoming meetings in March with the planning commission, on March 3rd and 17th, starting at 6:00 PM. And in your binder is the zoning map, and I've also stapled a list of what changes occurred between the old zoning map and the new, so that you don't have to do the back-and-forth comparison, it's all outlined for you with the correct addresses and the change that took place. So, with that concludes my presentation, and enjoy your reading. Thanks.
Question. Section three, where you speak about certain requirements that go across all zones, so the village sits aside from that, does it not, because it flies in the face of all the requirements, setbacks, heights, everything, yes?
Well, so, some of the standards within the village will be found in that third, but the central village, the regulations for it, such as setbacks, height, that will be found in the chapter two.
So, that's, will be considered a special application? Because, go back to the slide, because the slide seems to say that this is what we're going to do in the entire city. There are, what I'm trying to get to is, what are we calling the central village as far as the rationale, with the differences in the setbacks, heights, and?
The unique characteristics of the central village are retained in this code, I think what Kate's talking about, is there's, you know, appeal protocol, public noticing protocol, all of those things, some of those things do span across all the different districts.
And what I'm trying to figure out is the standards that apply to multiple zoning districts, we're calling the village, I don't know.
I think I can.
Special.
I can, I can, so, in part two, you have your zoning standards, so in the central village, it'll say zero setback, and you need to have at least 50% of your building frontage at the front property line. What this part three is, is that every zone throughout has height standards, setback standards, and floor area ratio standards, so when, the code explains how to measure height, or how to identify, such as in the slide, your front setback, your side yard setback, that's what you'll find in this, is just the very, it's applicable to every zone, but once you get into the zone, the specifics of the front yard will be in the previous section of part two.
So, this is sort of a codex to teach people what a front setback is?
Mm-hmm, it is. And when we talk about floor area ratio, or height, height's a good one, in the village has a 20, has a different height standard, there are certain exceptions, such as mechanical, that goes beyond the height limit, that's allowed up to a certain area, that would be found in the citywide standard, but in the village, you might find, if there was a specific height allowance.
Architectural element.
Yeah, an architectural element, such as a lighthouse.
A lighthouse, or a windmill, or?
Yep, you've got it.
An oil derrick, I don't know.
But that is how it's broken down, yeah.
Okay, good.
Does that make sense?
It's the time to get silly, okay. Thank you for one more binder, I was waiting.
You're welcome.
So, I remember the discussion about historic district and all that sort of stuff, so you have a section in there, did you guys go wild, or are we going to be set with all sorts of criteria? How did you deal with that?
We simplified it, we didn't, there were a lot of, within the issues and options, there were a lot of options that we decided not to go with, and it was more of, let's outline what the process is today, and make it clear for applicants, but let's not add any more. So, it's really a clean, clear process, but it's, it now explains what we currently adhere to, and better.
Okay, so, suppose someone wanted to come in and tear down the mercantile and build a new building, would there be an issue because that has historic?
You know, it would go through a process, and actually, that's one, it would most likely end up in front of the City Council for a determination of whether or not the building can come down. So, there's, in the code, we have the local inventory, which is a list of properties that might be historic, and then we have the landmark status, which is those properties that are either on the national state, or locally designated as historic. So, if any of the buildings that are landmark status wanted to come in and be demolished, it would be a City Council determination. Anything that's on our local list, if we have, how it's proposed, is that if a historic architect tells us it is not historic, it can come off the local list that is a possibly historic building, so.
So, I don't know.
They were kind of creating two designations, but that would most likely, the mercantile would come back before you if it were on, I don't think it's landmark status, I don't think.
No plaque on it.
So, it would go through a review by a historic architect, and then decide it.
So, if the landowner agrees with Mike, that if, I think this is what he said, it's probably seen its day, then we would eventually get to make that decision?
There's a lot of different specific elements in the code right now, I don't think we're prepared to delve into the details of each one.
Stephanie's got a question. Just to, I just thought about it, last time we did this, and we did the general plan, we got into some real sticky discussions about shall and should, and I didn't think about it this time, but did you, did that cross your mind last time? Remember that, we had some, I thought you were on the council then, and we had those discussions about, we really didn't want to say, you should do that, if we really wanted to leave it open.
Shall, should, and may.
So, that is outlined in part one, exactly how those terms are utilized throughout the document. So, when you utilize the word shall, it has to happen, it outlines exactly when those terms are used.
Yeah, because there were a couple of things we really wanted to have done, and so we really wanted to make sure the language was clear, that it would be a requirement, that you shall do this if you are going to do that, or, I can't remember exactly what it was, but at the time, it was very important.
Shall sounds more cordial than does.
You have another question?
Your turn. Again, the words possibly historic just run my blood cold, as they do anybody who wants to buy, build, or alter anything in the city. Are we going to be able to, are we going to be able to have a listing that we can rely on, or is it all pretty fuzzy still?
For the landmark structures, we do have a list, and those are the ones that we know are historic, but the other, that's another, that would be a follow-up project for our department, to create a list and have it adopted.
So, anything that's not of the possibly historic, a future buyer or owner could feel safe that it will not be put under any historic review? Now, we might get clarification here.
Ah. I was sitting back there too long this evening, good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. The list that was prepared, I don't believe was adopted, and it was simply kind of a windshield inventory, identified structures that have a potential to be historic, but there's been no studies done to verify whether or not most of those structures are indeed historic. In order for us to do that, it'd be a pretty extensive, expensive, and time-consuming process, and you also have to have cooperation with the property owners, some of whom are probably going to be reticent to have their properties designated as historic, others would embrace it.
No, possibly historic is okay, if anything outside that world of possibly historic is, are definitely not historic, you know what I'm trying to say?
Got you.
I'm trying not to get someone into a trap where, you know, some idle comment, or some musing about some famous person who slept there, God knows what could come up. We could, if we get that out of the way of the residents?
I think it would still require some level of study, you know, you'd have to evaluate it, and against federal register, and, you know, look at who lived there, what's the architecture, if there's, is there any?
So, what you're saying is, every building in this city is possibly historic?
No, the list, I mean, it's, you know, I'll hazard a guess, there's, you know, several dozen structures listed in there, so, a small fraction.
I accept that, what I'm saying is- What I'm saying is, anything that's not on that list, can we say with certainty to an applicant, your property's not historic?
In 99% of cases, we can. I mean, there might be a few outliers out there, the survey is older. Generally speaking, I believe it's 40 or 50 years old is the threshold to evaluate a structure. Nonetheless, we can look at most and say, well, it's not...
That's a lot of houses in Capitola.
Nothing special about it at a staff level, we can make that judgment, 99% of the cases.
That's 1970.
That's right.
Is the mercantile possibly historic?
That one possibly could. I mean, it's been in the village for a long time, it's an older building, you know, that one would at least require some level of evaluation.
Okay. And then, that was basic, my question. So eventually, it could come to the city council?
Potentially, sure.
Okay. Okay. So we could weigh, if there's benefit to Capitola to go ahead with the project, even though it's possibly historic? That's what I'm trying to get at.
I just want applicants to know...
Oh, yeah.
At the counter...
Right.
What they're dealing with, or potentially dealing with.
Right.
Not after they paid an architect and come to Arkensight, and the planning commission...
So that is clarified in the new code, that if you're on the greater list of potential, that the first step is, that the city, we hire a third party to review the property. That is in the code.
And if you're not on the potential list, that's the crack in the sidewalk I'm concerned with.
Very seldom, if it's not on the list, very seldom when we look at it. If we notice that it looks old and it's not on the list, we might raise our eyebrows and say, geez.
He gave you 99%, that's all he's going to give you. Thank you.
But those are going to be very rare exceptions.
Right. Good.
Just one quick question. The fingers are Cliff Notes, that is, all the changes will have...
Those identify all the changes that occurred between the old code and the new, so...
All right. I have to thank you and your staff, and Rich. I don't know how you kept it all together. I know you really have a big staff, but you know what I mean.
You know, it almost would be interesting to leave that in there, just historically. Somebody looking at it would want to know, maybe, what was old and what was new, or what had changed. But gee, we used to do those things before, and now we can't do them, or something. I don't know. You know, I mean, probably, you know, a builder wouldn't really maybe look at it, but anyway, it's interesting. Keep one copy, well, we'll keep these copies.
So in the next few weeks, we're sending out a list to the planning commission of those items that we're going to hit during the review, and we'll be sending that to you as well, so it'll highlight the sections to take a closer look at, and then we're hoping to spend time on those items that have been modified with you.
Do you have a goal for adoption?
I think May, was there? May or June?
Okay.
Give you a summer?
Great work, both of you.
Nice job.
Yeah, thanks.
Glad we're getting, moving forward on that. With that, that brings us to the end of our meeting. We will adjourn this meeting until February 25th at 7:00 PM. Good night, Capitola.